Buenas en. Buenas en, hafa de. Welcome to the Guam Congress Building. Thank you for being here today. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Thursday, November 16, and the time is 9:35 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Wednesday, November 8th and Tuesday, November 14th. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please state your name for record-keeping purposes. In an effort to minimize distractions while someone is testifying, the committee asked those present to please refrain from moving around within the public hearing room. Additionally, we've asked protocol to keep the doors quiet. Individuals who are presenting oral testimony are invited to also submit written testimony afterwards in order to ensure that their input is accurately transcribed. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in direct response to questioning or invitation of a senator who has the floor or when recognized by the committee chair. After all have testified, senators will be recognized for five minutes of questioning of the panel or comments on the bill and shall not interrupt any other senators or any person testifying. Additional rounds of questions if time permits. The hearing must conclude this morning at 12:00 p.m., but we have scheduled to continue this hearing at 5:30 for those who were not able to make it this morning. This hearing is to collect testimony. Berating of the witnesses will not be allowed. If you ask a question, please allow them to answer. We're here for one agenda item, and that is Bill Number 184-37COR. It is a bill introduced by the Committee on Rules by request of Imaga Hagan Guahan, the governor of Guam, in accordance with the Organic Act of Guam. It is an act to authorize the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to sell or lease lots 2453, 2453-1, 2454, 2455, 2457, and 2457-1, municipality of Baragata, to the government of Guam at fair market value for use as the site of a new medical complex. I'd like to acknowledge and thank my colleagues for being here this morning, beginning with Senator Tom Fisher. Thank you, Senator, and Senator Chris Barnett. I am Teresa Lyte, Chairperson of the Committee on Health and Land, Justice and Culture. So this bill was introduced by the Committee on Rules at request of the governor on October 11th and referred to the committee on the same date. This is the third hearing on Bill Number 184-37. The first hearing convened on November 1st and was continued to November 3rd, and we will continue this morning's hearing. We will have to end at 12:00 p.m., and we will continue at 5:30 p.m. today. The goal of the committee is to provide ample opportunity for the public to include our medical community to weigh in on the issue. We've also requested additional feedback from GPA, GWA, DPW, CLTC, Department of Land Management, Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, Matrix, the Office of the Governor. The bill proposes to sell or lease the lots in the municipality of Baragata, commonly referred to as the EDA Agaga site. And the bill says to the government of Guam at fair market value for use as the site of a new medical complex. These are Crown lands confirmed, located approximately a mile north of Eagles Field and near the next where Eagles Field, where the radar facility is and is potentially slated to be a missile defense and military housing site off of Route 15 in Mangilau. These lots extend back towards the former Navy golf course in Baragata. We'll put up some maps in a little while. I want to clarify today. Let me recognize my colleague, Senator Joseph Augustine, since he was Mozzie Senator, for being here this morning. I'd like to clarify some of the confusion that we have had regarding this property. Earlier in media coverage of the governor's meetings and testimony in previous hearings that we have had regarding this bill and Epa Point, there was testimony that the 61 acres of the lots described in Bill 184 were not the Atacau lots studied by Matrix. This assertion was disputed at the last hearing by the director of land management, who said he believed they 102 acres is the same property described as Atacau Crown in the Matrix study. So we have asked both of them to confirm that for us today, and the Ancestral Lands Commission Director did confirm to me in a letter that the lots described in Bill 184 as part of the medical campus plan, and in the plan it was referred to as Atacau Crown. The committee... So it's not where we call Atacau, for example, where Atacau School is right now. There's an Atacau Elementary School. This is down across from Hawaiian Rock, closer towards Eagles Field. But we're calling it for the purposes of this hearing Atacau Crown because that's how it's referred to in the Matrix study. It's also referred to by some of the departments as EDA Agaga. So this is a departure from our last hearing where we had information that this was not the same property. All right, if we could put the maps up, please. There are three maps, very quick. Thank you. If we could start with the first map? No, not this. There's three maps. My apologies. We're just... I'm sorry, I'm going to wait for these maps to come up. They've been passed out to the senators, however, so they're in your packet. We'll take a one-minute recess. My apologies again. All right, thank you. So this is in... We're back. Thanks. We're back from recess. Thank you for your patience. This is an overview map of the area that we received last week from the Department of Land Management. So the bright green area within the green grass-looking area, that's the site for the proposed medical campus, and this map includes lot, I think it's 1481, that Ancestral Lands claimed in the last hearing that they have cleared and are asking that the bill be amended to include that lot as well. So it's like a slingshot shape of parcels, different lots combined. The white... You can see the airport up to the top left of this property. And again, so this is... The red writing on the bottom says Medical Campus, the part that's in the ocean. To the left of that, there's another red writing that says GWA-GPA. And the white construction-looking area close to the ocean, that's Hawaiian Rock. The yellow lines depict lots, and the red lines right next to the lots we're talking about, those are the adjacent lots as well. So the lots have been mapped out. Okay, next slide, please. This is again, it's off of Route 15. All right, so the blue line on this map, these are maps from GWA, and the blue line, I think, goes along Route 15, but it's labeled Water Main Route 15. So the blue line from the left going all the way across the map, those are the main water lines. And the white arrows towards the left, there's an arrow pointing up and a pointing down, that's labeled nearest GWA Gravity Sewer. Okay, and again, the white rocky-looking area towards the bottom of the map in the middle, that's Hawaiian Rock. All right, thank you. Next slide, please. One more slide. Okay, thank you. So this is a map we also received from GWA. The bright, bold line coming off of Route 15, towards the bottom of the slide, there's a bright, bold yellow line coming off of Route 15. That, according to Ancestral Lands, is the existing 40-foot easement. That yellow line goes along the pink shaded lots and goes all the way up on the left side. That's the bold yellow line. The red lines are proposed easements. So according to Ancestral Lands, these red lines are proposed easements. Another one is going to come off of Route 15, going north, and then straight up into the property. They claim these are... These can be changed because these are all Crown lands, and they can reconfigure these lines going across the lots in question. But these access lines, proposed access, also go out of this property towards other areas, which I want to discuss with them in a little while. All right. Again, these maps have all been given to the senators, but I'm trying to show this to the people who are watching. Thank you. Thank you to AV and my staff for the maps. We did write a letter to the Department of Land Management on October 26th requesting the list of landowners on the adjacent lots, and so we did receive that, and those documents are up in the drive for you to review. Thank you to Department of Land Management for that work. Again, we're including Lot Number 2481 in this hearing in the shaded areas. That's the lot that was not included in the bill, but they have asked us to amend the bill, so I'm putting that in there so that we can discuss that at this hearing. That will bring the total of the lots to over 100 acres from the Land Bank Trust. All right, so the bill proposes Ancestral Lands would authorize or approve the sale or lease of these lots following a completion of a survey and appraisal, and there would be no further legislative approval of the terms, including the length or the value of the lease or the sale. In this scenario, the Director of Ancestral Lands would be guiding the commission on its decision-making for the terms of the lease. And we have heard from the governor publicly that she wishes to purchase the property. It's unclear at this point, the funding source for the property. We've asked for that and for the purchase, but we do know that the governor has funded the appraisal of this property through the Ancestral Lands Commission. But she's funded it out of her office. After the appraisal, the terms of the sale or lease will be negotiated between Ancestral Lands and the governor. And we are waiting for details on the methodology of the evaluation. This is an agriculturally-zoned property right now, but a property very close to it has been zoned M1. We are concerned, of course, about undervalued leases or sales, and we have... There is a provision in Guam law that this bill will waive that says that no bill authorizing the transfer of land may be considered by the legislature unless accompanied by two appraisals appraised for the highest and best use regardless of zoning, from two separate licensed real estate appraisals. So the bill proposes to waive this section of the law. So again, the specific sale terms, including the price, the funding mechanism remain unknown, and the sale price will be negotiated by the governor and Ancestral Lands Commission. The bill also provides that GIDA shall have cognizance or jurisdiction over the property if sold, and even if the property is leased. GIDA is currently the property manager for the Ancestral Lands Commission, and Ancestral Lands Commission acknowledged that their preliminary estimate based on agricultural zone is $6 million in possible revenue for the sale of the land based on a $25 per square meter estimate. And GIDA, according to the fiscal note we received from BBMR, GIDA has estimated that the lots could be sold for $20 per square meter. But Ancestral Lands has also acknowledged that there are 3,000 Land Bank beneficiaries... Well, no, I take it back. There are 3,000 lots which have not been returned to Ancestral Landowners that have been kept by the government, and the owners of those lots, they are the beneficiaries of the Land Bank. So there are 3,000 lots. If there are two owners per lot, that's about 6,000 people. So the $6 million is not going to go far for compensation for those people, and he did say at the last hearing that it would be inadequate. The bill does not contain any plans for the medical campus, so that's all outside of the bill. That's not determined by this bill. What we have in front of us is just a plan that was made by Matrix, where they analyzed three properties and they made plans for building the hospital medical complex on Eagles Field. Without this bill, Ancestral Lands would have to present the lease or the sale details for approval to the legislature. This bill creates an exemption to that statute. This bill does not allow the legislature to review any financial or in-kind commitments binding the people of Guam for potential federal funding on this property. Those are all outside the scope of this bill. This bill would, in fact, waive any further review of use of this property by the legislature, it looks like. All right. And again, in 2019, the legislature passed a law authorizing the financing and construction of a hospital in government of Guam land. The governor's team decided no government of Guam land was acceptable, pursued federal land at Eagles Field. The AG did not approve that lease. The administration is now pursuing lands from the Ancestral Land Bank Trust. These were reserved to compensate those landowners whose property was returned by the United States but would not be returned to landowners because it was kept for government of Guam uses. These include the Tezen Airport lands and the Baragata lands used for National Guard facilities. There was a lot of discussion over the previous hearings, the hearings on Epa Point, the hearings on Bill 184 regarding the medical campus plan. Based on the Matrix analysis of the available sites with the criteria determined by the government of Guam, the subject lots of Bill 184, referred to as Atacau Crown in the Matrix study, we've just confirmed this, ranked third, with Epa Point ranking second. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes. Thank you, Speaker, and Senator Telo Titigui. Thank you, Senator. Epa Point was listed as 35 acres by Matrix and preferable over EDA Agaga or the Atacau Crown lands under the categories of travel distance, proximity to arterial roads, distance from clinics and hospitals, power, water, wastewater, construction costs, land use and zoning compatibility. This is on Slide 5. Could we put up the slide? All right, this is page 2-5 of the Matrix study. It just talks about the three properties that were studied in depth and the 35 acres at Epa. That's what they refer to here. Next slide, please. This is Eagles Field, Atacau, and Epa Point. It goes from Epa Point on the left. There's a picture of Atacau in the Matrix study that I think is not Atacau. It doesn't match the maps from Department of Land Management, and this is a map of Eagles Field. All right, next slide. This is the slide number 5. This is the one that shows the comparison of how they rated these different parcels. So this one shows Epa... Sorry, go back to that slide. Epa versus Atacau. Number 3, it was 1, 2, or 3. Number 3 is the highest rating. So again, Epa was preferable for travel distance, proximity to arterial roads, distance from clinics and hospitals, power, water, wastewater, construction costs, land use, zoning compatibility. Atacau Crown lands was preferable under the categories of size, property value impact, traffic conditions, and future expansion capability. Matrix in their disclaimer says that they were not responsible for identifying alternative sites for the new public hospital and medical campus, developing site selection criteria, providing the data for assessing these alternatives, and selecting the preferred site were all with the responsibility of the government of Guam agencies, according to Matrix. All right, and so we've called this additional hearing because I wanted to get additional information. As described at the previous hearing, there is some conflicting information that we have been receiving during the hearings. We want to clarify that once and for all. We want to make sure that what's being told to the public is what's being told to the senators, and that that's the information that we're going to use to make our decision, and that we can clarify what is rumor versus fact. And our goal, my goal with the committee work, is to put this information solidly in front of the senators. It's going to be pretty much ending up with the pros and cons of each site, and they're going to have to make that decision, and it's a big decision, and so we need to have the real facts before us. We've had conflicting information from agencies, conflicting with the governor's statements in public. We've had... I've requested the governor to come and really brief us on these federal, potential federal entities commitments that were also talked about in the media regarding the new medical campus. And she declined to come on October 26th, however. She did tell us, and she did tell me in a meeting, that the federal funding should be available if it's going to become available regardless of the location of the medical complex. We've also asked for confirmation on the source of funding for the purchase price of the property, and I asked the governor. She confirmed that ARP money would be used for infrastructure, so I'd just like to receive additional confirmation that there is enough, that this is an allowable use, and then what funds will be used for the design or the construction going forward. And then I want to thank Department of Land Management for also answering questions as to the adjacent landowners. So they've given us a list, again, senators who came a little later. We put those into the link for you to access, adjacent landowners. We've also asked them to confirm that the lot numbers that we are referring to in this bill are the lot numbers that Matrix was using when they studied Atacau Crown lands. bill are the lot numbers that Matrix was using when they studied Adakau Crown lands. They described them as Adakau Crown lands because the lot numbers are nowhere in the Matrix study. So we did receive a document from the Department of Land Management that shows what he gave Matrix, which includes lot numbers, and those lot numbers match this bill. We asked for all the studies because there were testimony at the last hearing that this property was more suitable than the others, and it doesn't necessarily match with what Matrix has said. So we had asked for all the studies that were given to Matrix. So all of those documents from the Department of Land Management are also available in the drive. There were no documents from the Ancestral Lands Commission to back up those statements. So, but we've included all the documents we've received. Again, the Director of Ancestral Lands has confirmed that Adakau Crown, as referred to by Matrix, is what he is referring to as Eda Agaga. And this is a shift in testimony, so this is now what we are going to use, that these properties studied by Matrix as Adakau Crown are the same as the Eda Agaga and the lot numbers that are listed in the bill. All right. And so part of the confusion, or most of the details that we've discussed are based on overall costs of the property. And slide number five shows that, well, Army Corps of Engineer estimated in 2020 that the price of a hospital would be $743 for a new hospital. May 2023, we have documents from the governor's office indicating they have requested $837 from the Federal DOD, or that is their estimate of the cost of the new hospital. At this point, May 2023, $837 million. Army Corps' assessment did not include land transfer, upgrades to infrastructure, feasibility studies for potential impacts to patient travel to a new facility, does not address potential clinical space deficiencies nor meet the future end state of clinical services that must be resolved prior to design. I do not have any specific figures that include the cost of the additional Veterans Administration facility proposed in the plan. Matrix does not break any of those costs out, public health, behavioral health, assisted living facility, the medical provider offices, the helipad, or the CDC lab. And as we heard at the last hearing, or at the Ancestral Lands, or sorry, at the last hearing, CDC lab will not be on this campus. They are securing a site in Mangila for the CDC lab. The medical campus plan by Matrix states that the estimated cost of developing the new hospital, related medical facilities, and the required infrastructure is between $800 million and $1 billion for the selected site of Eagles Field. Infrastructure costs for Adakau Crown under the Matrix study says similar to Eagles Field. According to the medical campus plan by Matrix, costs are the highest for Adakau over Eagles Field and Epa Point. This is on slide number five. And these are also contained in the senators packets. Yeah, so this is on item number 15, is the construction costs. That's how they were rated. All right. Thank you. So then, if you can get slide number nine ready. The infrastructure and the land use, again, are estimated from the governor to be paid out of ARP funds, which the most recent media article states to be $133 million. The cost estimate for Eagles Field for infrastructure, according to the medical campus plan, is about $100 million plus, because all the estimates are plus. In comparison, Epa Point structure was estimated in the same study to cost $20 million for water, power, roads, and sewer. This cost comparison suggests a difference of $80 million, which could be used for other purposes. We asked GWA, and they responded immediately that they have not undertaken any research or study into the easements or access required for potential infrastructure for the Adakau Crown lands. So they, we, they did provide that map that we showed earlier of the water lines and the sewer system infrastructure that was prepared for Eagles Field. And they also gave us a map of their planned improvements to an area called Adakau next to Adakau Elementary School. So that's a totally different area, and there are infrastructure plans for that area, according to Guam Water Works. The Matrix study says that it would, on slide number nine, says it's going to take two years, two to three years, two to three years for the roads. They are planning a six-lane highway, it says they will need to create there on Route 15. And GPA. And the GPA would require, proposes a power substation, timeline one year for design, two years for construction. GWA would need to build a water storage tank, a water pump, and well. Requires half an acre potential well drilled off campus. Wastewater will need significant upgrades, according to GWA. So the next slide shows that this was their conclusion for Eagles Field, which we are supposed to use for utility comparison for Adakau Crown as well. And the highlighted portion says wastewater, electricity, and transportation infrastructure upgrades must occur before the campus's development. That's for Eagles Field and Adakau Crown. There was also discussion regarding the acreage. The governor has stated publicly that the Epa Point is too small. We, of course, discussed at the Epa Point hearing before about building there and building upwards, vertical. The current plans are largely single, I mean, horizontal, and especially the parking structure. Land Management testified on May 17 on the viability of Epa Point for a hospital that, quote, "What was once a 53-acre parcel now only has 27 usable acres, usable acres of available open space and allowing for map and severed easements of approximately two acres." That would be approximately 25 acres, unquote. So the question is whether this can fit the square footage requirements for the hospital, the proposed VA wing, the administration buildings as depicted on the Matrix design, especially if consolidated and built vertically. The current GMH hospital is built on less than 17 acres of land. GRMC is built on seven acres. The Pacific Islands Club, 777 guest rooms and a water park and a parking structure is built on 22 acres of property. Subaki Tower has 340 rooms, 27 floors, built on five acres. On Hui Project Proposal and Design, this is for the old Royal Palms location, is proposing two towers, 37 stories north tower, 31 stories south tower on seven acres at a projected cost of $300 million as of 2020 report. The Donkey Store, 14 acres, according to one of the news articles, two-story retail facility, 263 customer parking spaces, 43 staff parking spaces. There is no dispute that the current GMH facility, the current hospital site, when vacated, could be made usable for other public health offices or behavioral health expansion or any other hospital-related or administrative facilities. According to a Matrix study done years ago, this is less than half a mile from the Epa Point site that they studied. So the current hospital is less than half a mile from the Epa Point. Public Health at the last hearing testified that they want to consolidate all their office space for public health programs in the same building, including Division of Senior Citizens, Division of Children's Wellness, the federal benefits programs, Medicaid, WIC, et cetera, and that Public Health would not be establishing a new clinic to replace central medical and dental clinics closed when the Mangila building was shut abruptly in 2019. This is not, there is like conflicting testimony in the Matrix study regarding this. There are drive time studies as well in the Matrix study. This is chart number six, slide number six. These are also provided to the senators. And this is just slide number six. It shows the drive time to Epa Point was within a 20-minute range for more of Guam's population than to Adakau Crown, and the difference was 14,000 people. Slide number six, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. The, it also shows that almost 3,000 more people will not be served within 30 minutes of Adakau Crown than compared to Epa Point. So this is the information that Matrix put out. And as you know, we heard testimony in the last hearing that differs from this, saying that the drive time would be shorter to Mangila site than to the current GMH. And this is, the testimony said due to traffic and other factors. The Matrix study shows that it would be over 30 minutes to either location from Jotnia, Talafofu, Inilahan, Melesu, Humatek, not, I'm sorry, not Jotnia and Talafofu, Inilahan, Melesu, Humatek, and Haget. Over 30 minutes to either location. It's of course shorter from Jotnia and Talafofu to Mangila. The drive time, according to Google Maps, from the Epa Point to the current hospital site is three minutes. All right. You can take that slide down. Okay, so we had a lot of questions regarding the federal funding and the VA facility commitments that we heard about in the media, but we have asked through FOIA and all other documents for those. And there are no written federal commitments. There may be discussions. There are no documents to indicate any federal commitments to hospital funding or construction, the funding or construction of a long overdue veterans facility, or a federal commitment to fund increased capacity for military medical needs. No documents were produced, and we had asked GIDEA, the governor's office. And because of the high-level discussions indicated in the media. And again, the governor confirmed that the federal fund should not be contingent on one location over another. GIDEA confirmed that they were not engaged in discussions with federal officials and stated that, quote, "GIDEA is not and has not been involved with any lobbying commitments, obligations, nor agreements regarding funding support from the relevant federal agencies." There is also a difference in what was described in the Matrix report as a VA facility. The GMH CEO told me after the hearing that it's intended to be a wing of the Guam Hospital, so a local facility for veterans. However, the governor said she's proposing that the VA build and co-locate its own facility near our Guam hospital on government of Guam property instead of on federal-controlled property. So there are no formal written details of that or any commitments as to VA funding to, or commitment to use government of Guam land to expand the CIBOC or the Veterans Hospital coverage to government of Guam facility. We talked about delays to construction, and we'd like to talk about that further today with the agencies that are here. Matrix estimated that the infrastructure upgrades needs would, of course, we talked about the cost, $100 million. They would require a six-lane highway, two to three years for DPW, utility infrastructure design and construction, two years for GPA, and no estimates for GWA. This is for the Eagles Field and the Adakau Crown areas. The medical campus plan states affirmatively that the water, wastewater, electricity, and transportation infrastructure upgrades must occur before the campus's development. All right. So again, I want to thank the agencies who are here and those who are here to testify as well, and my colleagues, of course. All right. And I thank my colleagues again for being here this morning. And so we are going to proceed now with testimony. And I cut off Dr. Shea at the last hearing because we were short on time. We were going into a state function. And so he's going to be allowed to finish his testimony just very briefly, hopefully, and then we will hear from the agencies. All right. So if we could get Dr. Shea's, thank you. Good morning. Please proceed.
Thank you very much for allowing me to continue. Hopefully, I don't take too much time, you know, regarding my testimony. If I can put back up my previous slide so I can continue and finish. Okay. So, you know, we talked about the medical complex. And last time, when I testified, I already testified that the medical complex is already built around Epa. And to restate Kendian Gorrell's statement that over the last four decades, you know, listed down here on the slide, the multiple clinics, and this is just a short list of the clinics and the physicians, the specialties, the cancer centers, radiology centers, all built around Epa. Next slide. So that slide there, you know, I'm a veteran as well. And, you know, we heard the news that, you know, we want to have government of Guam take care of the veterans, which is all good. But the reality is that when I talk to many of our veterans, you know, we really want access to private care, private clinic care. So it's, it's good that the thought of being veterans is there, but it's even better if we can get them access. Now, I confirmed with Caesar Cabinet this morning that the VA has already contacted Caesar Cabinet, and they are, if not in the process, but already signed a contract to build a VA clinic at the Caesar Cabinet building right next to GRMC. And the VA also had asked me before to also help them with access for women's health. So I'm going to be helping them as well in that regard. So the complex that's going to be built way out, you know, in the middle of nowhere there, the access really is right there in Caesar's building, and I'm glad that's happening. Next slide. Now, this next slide is an important slide that I want to point out. This is directly from the governor's petition. If you recall, she sent out a petition for the people of Guam to read and to sign to support Bill 184. But if you read this petition carefully, look at the complex. The complex there is already built around Epa Point. So as a Navy veteran, I looked at this particular slide, and what pointed out to me is the VA. Look what it says. It does not say a VA clinic. It does not say a VA wing. What it says is a Veterans Administration facility. And that is a direct petition that Adaloo has put out. So even themselves are telling people that, hey, they're going to build a VA clinic, but in their petition here, they're saying that they're building a VA administrative facility, not a clinic. So, you know, we have to be out more front on that. Next slide. Now, the fallacy that also is told to us, veterans, is that if they build a medical complex, they do not have to leave the island. That is totally false. And I can tell you this, because I practice in Hawaii, we have many state-of-the-art hospitals there, and we still have to send patients off island for care. So to tell people of Guam, if you build a complex, you don't have to leave island for care, that is false and is not true. You're still going to have to leave island for care, and that is very, very true. Next slide. Now, when we heard that we must build a, you know, this hospital up there for women and children, the next generation, well, if that is true, then Bill 184 is not the answer. The time is of essence. When you're delivering a baby, when the mother is in labor, it starts to crash, bleed, baby heart rate goes down, the OB-GYN must respond fast. Without the OB-GYNs being near the hospital with direct access, baby and mom's going to die. So if you talk about building for future generations, you must consider Epa Point. Bill 184 will put lives of mothers and lives of babies at risk. Now, last, next slide. This is the last slide. Now, I brought up Dr. Hirata in my previous. Now, I brought up Dr. Hirata in my previous testimony. I wasn't able to finish, but I'm not going to read his entire testimony, but I just want to point out a few things. And, you know, he mentioned, dear honorable Speaker Trulahi, honorable senators of the 37 legislature, I'm a board certified maternal fetal medicine specialist and also a board certified in genetics. I have the privilege to help care and consult on thousands of Guam high-risk patients as mothers and their babies over the past decade. Needless to say, Guam's population of pregnant moms is very high risk. One must understand the field obstetric is a high risk in itself, even if the low-risk pregnant moms goes into labor at any stage of the laboring process, things can go wrong. And if you're a woman and you've been pregnant before, you had a baby, you know exactly what we're talking about. Now, I will conclude this with just a few more lines here. When we talk about access, it is not just access for pregnant patients, but access for OB-GYN providers on Guam. This is just one of the key reasons why Bill 184 proposed building a hospital way out away from Guam's OB-GYNs really is a great mistake. In addition, one last point, public health center does not need to be next to the hospital. Fact, none of our Hawaii hospital have public health center next to it, none. And the reason is obvious. Majority of the continuity of care, even with the indigent population, are encouraged to access private clinics or the outlying public health center in different areas around the island for better access. And that's just part of the testimony from Dr. Hirata that I kind of took out. And he will be submitting a letter to the speaker and also to the 37 Guam Legislature in opposition to Bill 184. Next slide. And I think that's the conclusion of the, my continuation of testimony. And I want to thank the speaker and the legislature for allowing me to continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shea. I did hear on the radio something about that, the facility up at the Cabot Building, but I have nothing in writing to confirm that, so we are trying to seek that as well.
Yes, and I encourage you to, I encourage the speaker and the legislator to also talk to Caesar Cabot. I spoke to him this morning, and it's actually very good news. And, you know, I rise as a veteran to help the VA to help access for women to care over that facility as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any question for Dr. Shea? Senator Fisher?
Thank you very much, ma'am. Just a couple of questions. Dr. Shea, you just recently mentioned that you had spoken to Caesar Cabot about the facility he has across from, well, up in Dedodo, what is that, Guam Regional Medical Center?
Yes, this morning, yes.
Yeah. You, I'm sure you are aware that Mr. Cabot has been offering that facility as kind of a stopgap measure as we transition to a new hospital. And I learned that there's quite a sizable mortgage on that property. I think the lender is holding something like $14 million for Mr. Cabot's property. And you've been, in a sense, advocating for that. So first question is, are you a registered lobbyist here on Guam?
What is a registered lobbyist?
Pursuant to statute, I mean, you're trying to, you are advocating for a particular position, and I'm wondering, well, it sounds very much like lobbying. And I'm wondering, are you registered under the Guam Code Annotated?
I'm not registered, and I'm a registered voter, and I'm an advocate. I don't consider advocacy as lobbying. I mean, if anybody's lobbying, it's really Adaloo.
Okay. And do you have a facility currently in the village of Tumuning?
Yes, I built a new clinic here in Tumuning, and I've been on Guam for 27-plus years. And--
Does that facility, is there a mortgage on that facility?
No.
Okay, it's fully paid for? Are there chattel mortgages on any of the equipment within the facility?
Zero.
Chattel mortgage on any equipment within the facility?
No.
Okay.
I mean, Mr. Fisher, I don't know what your line of questioning is, but if you're asking a practice, if you ask you for clinical practice, I can tell you this. One thing I noticed that the misconception is that the clinics like us, the surgeons, the OB-GYNs rely on the hospitals and that we make money from the hospital. That is absolutely not true. We go to hospitals to help patients at the hospitals. They require us because there's shortage of surgeons, there's shortage of OB-GYNs. Now, I'm one of the rare OB-GYNs that's not from Guam, and I've been here for under three decades. I go to the hospital, I'm not paid by the hospital. I don't, what I say is this, the healthcare industry, we make more money staying in a clinic itself rather than going to the hospital. But besides that point, I have offered Public Health free service. I don't know if you got the letter. I presented it last testimony. I don't know if you were there. But the testimony I presented last time, that I, as a board certified OB-GYN, I rose to the occasion, and I wrote a letter to Public Health. You can ask Arsene Augustin if he's there, January this year, and I said, I do not want to get paid. That was the number one. I'd like to help you at Public Health to revamp your women's access for women, the indigent population on Guam. I'm still waiting to hear back. So it's not about money, and I can speak for many of the clinics around Tumuning.
Yes, sir.
They built the medical complex over the last 16 decades.
Dr. Shea, thank you very much for the answer, sir. Thank you for that answer. One of our duties here as an elected legislator is to try and discover whether or not any of the witnesses coming before us have a self-interest or self-dealing. We're always interested in that. That's why I was stunned, frankly, to hear you coming before us and advocating for a third-party institution in Dedodo and suggesting that we move up there. And so that's why I asked whether or not you have registered as a lobbyist.
Well, you know, Mr. Fisher, if I could finish, if I could finish my answer to that, the reason why, the reason why that I advocate for that is if you took a tour of labor and delivery, you will see, Mr. Fisher, why women and children are being neglected. That's why I'm advocating to move over to Caesar Cabot's place, because it's a facility that's going to help save lives and raise the rates of standard of care regardless. That's why I'm advocating. It's not lobbying.
All right. Madam Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you. Just for the record, we, as a committee, have received no records regarding proposal for the Cabot Building, either for the VA or as proposed by some of the other senators in the media.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. The witness himself brought it up. Thank you.
Yes, he's mentioning the news that there may be a VA facility being placed in the Cabot Building, but that's what he talked about. I forgot to say earlier, because we received this on Monday, a response to our FOIA from the governor's office. And so this letter attached is from Virat Tapasna, Executive Director, Community Defense Liaison Office, Office of the Governor. And it's called a list of DOD project funding requests. There's an updated list dated May 9, 2023, and a list prior to that that's not dated. So the list prior and the May 23 list both include new GMH to include infrastructure utility cost, estimated $837 and $120 million for infrastructure. And they list the potential funding sources as OLDCC, BIL, and TRA. The BIL is the, where is that? I don't remember right now. But, and then they list FEMA, Public Assistance, and USDA infrastructure loans. Those are for the new hospital to include infrastructure utility costs. That's one of, that's one of the projects listed. And on the old list, there's no veterans' projects listed, but on the new list from May 2023, there is one. It's called Veterans State Home New Construction. $77 million project cost to construct much-needed Veterans State Home for Guam. I didn't know what that was, so I looked it up. And a Veterans State Home is, a state Veterans Homes are facilities that provide nursing home, domiciliary or adult daycare. They are owned, operated, and managed by state governments. They date back to the post-civil war era, when many states created them to provide shelter to disabled and homeless veterans. To participate in the State Veterans Home Program, VA must formally recognize and certify a facility as a state Veterans Home. The VA then surveys all facilities each year to make sure they continue to meet VA standards. VA does not manage state Veterans Homes. That's just off of Google, so, but it does state, $77 million Veterans State Home Project. That's, that's the only hospital-related request on this May 2023 statement to Joint Region Marianas. All right. All right. So we now have, I think everyone here, Mr. Flores, they said you're here to listen. Thank you. We're here, Mr. Birch, oh, sorry. Did any other senator have a question for Dr. Shea? If not, I'd like to recognize the presence of Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, Senator, for being here this morning. All right, we're hearing now from Directors Birch and Borja. Director Birch is the executive director for the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission, also acting director for the Chamor Land Trust Commission. Director Joe Borja is the director of the Department of Land Management. I'd like to ask the director of land management to go first.
Actually, Madam Chair, I would prefer that the ancestral lands go first to show how he got these pieces of property for them.
That's fine.
If it's okay with--
Director Birch, please, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning to the senators, Vice Speaker Barnes, Senator Fisher, Senator Barnett, Senator Brown, and Senator Tiedegui. My name is John Birch. I'm the executive director of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission and the acting administrative director of the Chamor Land Trust Commission. I would prefer to answer questions if I have any, but I do have a summary, if you'd like to hear that, on how the process went about, you know, with selecting these properties.
Yes, please. The senators are, want to hear as much information as possible. Thank you.
So anyway, the governor identified six lots in Baragota, that total 61 acres, for the medical complex, and named these lots in legislation, which he submitted to Guam Legislature a few weeks ago. That's 18437, that's being discussed this morning. And basically, the measure would authorize GLC to negotiate with the governor for the sale or lease of the lots, as well as allow the agencies to approve the sale or lease without needing any further legislative approval. The lots included in the governor's bill are considered Spanish Crown or non-ancestral lands, meaning they are not eligible for ancestral return. In terms of the six lots identified by the governor in the bill, ancestral lands did review and clear the properties. This was based on available records and information which showed there were no ancestral landowners or claims associated with the six lots listed in the bill, the proposed bill. The Ancestral Lands Board authorized a survey and an appraisal of the requested property, which are currently ongoing. And although the lots eyed for the medical complex now total 61 acres, initially, seven lots totaling a little more than 102 acres of ancestral lands properties were requested for the project. It is important to note that anyone can file a claim for property. While the intention is to identify and exclude lots that could potentially have ancestral claims, the possibility of claims being filed cannot be entirely ruled out. However, for a claim to be substantiated, documented proof of ownership or rightful entitlement to the property is required. Ancestral lands carefully examined such claims to ensure their validity and legitimacy. It was discovered that ancestral claims were filed on one lot out of the initial seven. That's Lot 2481. And because of this, Lot 2481 was not included in the governor's bill for the ancestral lots. Lot 2481 is also Spanish Crown, non-ancestral lands. Five separate individuals, possibly members of a single family, submitted claims to the Department of Land Management asserting that their relative one occupied the lot. But upon reviewing our records, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission found that these claims did not align with the information we have on file. Recently, we have verified that these claims are not valid. Ancestral lands understands the significance of ancestral claims, and the commission is committed to ensuring a thorough, accurate resolution of matters like this. So in short, while the family may have filed a claim saying that their family once upon occupied the property, it doesn't necessarily mean that they owned it. The federal government has been known to lease properties out that were Crown properties or under their control to various families or people. It's just like if you were to live in a house, have children that are born and grown up in that house, if you were renting or leasing it, it did not give you ownership of that property. And that's probably what happened with Lot 2481. But our research did take us all the way back to the ceding of these Crown properties to the United States from the Spanish Crown. Therefore, they're referred to as Crown Lots. Non-ancestral lots are properties that the United States government may have purchased or the government of Guam and are no longer ancestral properties. So we've gone through that process. We've checked the old cadastral maps to get the actual place name identification. And the same as with the three land agencies, land management, ancestral lands, and Chamor Land Trust, we prefer on our own to identify properties by their lot numbers. But most people for, like to see properties identified by place name. And that's probably why there was an issue with the placing of this. Ancestral lands have always held that the properties are located in an area that's place named Eda Agaga and not Adakau. We do have property that's in Adakau. It's 75 or 73 acres further north. Adakau is more in the Manila area. These properties here, the six lots are located in Baragota. Access is through Manila. On 2481, I could say about 95% or 90% is in Baragota, and about 5% to 10%, depending when the surveys are completed, will be in Manila. And in the Manila area in that place, it would be Lalo. So there are different place names. Adakau is quite a bit further north from this property. So if you ask me if Adakau is mentioned in the Matrix survey or study, I would respond no. But if you ask me if the 102 acres are identified them by lot number, my answer would be yes. Because the only place that, that the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission has 102 acres close to, in one area, is in the area we identify as Eda Agaga. It is not Adakau. And we've seen this in various misunderstandings of place names that Mr. Borja has brought up several times. For example, when we refer to Epa Point, some people refer to it as the old hospital point, some say Sapun Point or Oka Point. We know it as Epa Point. And next to it, to the left, will be Sapun and then Oka. And Oka, you could identify that because it's where Oka Pales is. Epa Point is by the side of Epa. So, you know, we want to be clear about the actual place names. So at ancestral lands, we're particular about that because we tend to go back and diligently do our work to make sure these issues are clarified. So the property is Eda Agaga. It, total lots available to Spanish Crown are 102 acres. What was written in the bill was for 61 acres, and that's because we could not, it took us a bit longer to clear the last lot, which is about 41 acres. But we have since cleared that, and we've made the request in my last testimony to amend the bill to include that in it, because ancestral lands looks forward to increasing the funds we have in the land bank, either by sale or by lease. That determination will be left up here to the legislature. Any sale, lease, or transfer of property is within the jurisdiction of the legislature and not ancestral lands. We're allowed to lease or license properties for a term of less than five years. And so that's why this is before you. But I do have my land agent, Joey Leon-Gorero, he's a land agent three. He's done most of the work on this. If you need exact details of how the process went on, I would bring him forward to the table to explain that in great detail to you if needed. Thank you, senators.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions for the Director of Ancestral Lands, Vice Speaker? Senator Sonaguson?
You know, John, it was mentioned earlier by the speaker, something to do with property, the value, if you sell the property for supposedly the medical complex. the value, if you sell the property for supposedly the medical complex, that it may not be enough to divvy up with the other folks there, the landowners? And I'm just curious, do you have a means of ever generating money to give up to everybody? Because I don't see anything in the works. So, maybe you can comment to that.
There was a bill submitted by the Governor during the last legislature. We didn't have the opportunity to come down to speak on it. Another bill was submitted in January, well, the same bill was resubmitted this year in January. One was in the 36th legislature and again in January. We would like the opportunity to speak on that because we need to define who are the beneficiaries of the land bank. We have over $16 million in the land bank currently, but we need to identify who the beneficiaries are. Are they just the people or the individuals whose properties were taken by the federal government and returned to Gov Guam and retained for continued public use? Or they were people who, would it include people whose properties are leased to the Government of Guam but still retained by the federal government? Are they also beneficiaries? What about the people who still have a lot of property behind the fence at Camp Blas Anderson Naval Station? We have to identify who are the beneficiaries of the land bank before we can finalize the rules and regulations. That's within the legislature's control. So, when that bill comes up, should it ever come up, we'll be very much willing to participate here and work things out, whether it be roundtable, you know, because it has to be hashed out soon. And that's where we're at at this point. This was an issue when the initial rules and regulations were rejected by the Attorney General in 2017. These were, this was one of the basic, or one of the major issues in that. So, that bill's here at the legislature. We're just simply waiting for a public hearing so we can work that through.
What's the bill number?
I don't have it right offhand.
Okay. I'm just curious, and the reason why I ask that is because while you're still trying to figure it out, I heard you mention that you can't lease property more than five acres and I know that there's, or five years, correction? Five, no more than five years? I'm just curious is that, gosh, for just five years, isn't nobody going to want to develop anything on any property, any government Guam property?
That's, that's true. It is.
So, I need, I think you need to express that more often?
We've, we've come here before a public hearing on that issue, and we were asking for a longer term, 30 years, because we have some leases or licenses with businesses. AT&amp;T is coming up in a year. We're working on it now. Their lease will expire September of 2024. They have a five-year license. AT&amp;T would like to stay on this island. I know they deal mostly with the military. The landing for the cable is still federal property. We own or have jurisdiction over the terrestrial property and the building. So, that has to be addressed for AT&amp;T. That will be coming down soon.
All right.
We're here, though, this bill does not give a term. It's here because it's presumed it's going to be longer than five years.
Yes, this would be longer.
Yeah, that's Bill 184.
And that's where the legislature has jurisdiction if, when we exceed five years for lease or transfer or sell.
If it's unsold, then the five years doesn't matter. It's gone.
Right, but it, but it needs legislative authority to do so.
Understood. Okay, and that's the only reason I'm bringing it up. And as I look at this document, it says Adakau ground. I don't know if anybody here in, in my colleagues are from the north, but I'm from the north. Adakau is a lot closer to where I live, and I'm from Dededu and I live in Jigu. But where the, where the property we're talking about is Mingila. It's a lot, it's closer to Wyon Rock, and Adakau is good distance away from Wyon Rock. And when I look at this map, I'm like, needs to change this, you know, get rid of the word Adakau on the list because it's not Adakau. Otherwise, we'd be, we'd be right next to the school. You know, and it's part of Mingila, but it's, it's not, but it's not, but it's not in Adakau. Adakau is like Laddi Heights.
Yes.
Laddi Heights, right above Dededu. And if we want to talk about the people that will go to this hospital, if it's in the Mingila area, we have to include the people from the north. Because folks like me that travel from the north, just to get to Tumuning is more than 30 minutes, maybe 45. And I know that whenever I go the back road, it's a lot shorter. I can get to GWA a lot faster than I can get to GMH. Unless I have lights, then it's different. But we need to make sure that everybody understands that, that when we want to talk about something that's going to be in Mingila, it's a lot closer for 40, 50,000 people. That's where Dededu and Jigu comes into play. Because when we're traveling from Jigu, when I leave my house, and I go down the road between 7, between 7:15 or 7 o'clock, actually, up to 9 o'clock, lucky if you're in Tumuning, upper Tumun in 30 minutes. And when it's heavy traffic, I don't care whether you have an ambulance or not, you still got 30 minutes or more. Because unfortunately, the people of Guam, or the drivers, don't have a habit of when you hear the siren pull over, make room. And that's just, that's just the way it is up north. And I'm just concerned is that when we talk about certain areas and distance, I'm from the north. I know the distance. If you're from the south, don't tell me the distance from the north. Talk about your area, and then we can move on. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Fisher? She didn't win.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'll just, I'll follow up a little bit on what Senator Joe says. You know, I'm from Talafofu, and it's a lot faster to get to Adakau than it is to get to Tumuning. And I think that's true for everybody down south. Sir, I just wanted to, I just wanted to clarify, so no ancestral landowners are going to be deprived of property?
Correct.
All right, so even if we didn't transfer the property into Gov Guam's hands, it wouldn't be returned to any ancestral landowner, right?
Correct.
I just wanted to make that very clear because it's sensitive, and I'm sure you know, as sensitive as we all are to the disposition of land here. So, nobody is being deprived, is that correct?
You're correct.
Okay. Are you familiar, you know, I should have asked this question months ago, but when this property gets transferred, does, is Gov Guam going to take it as a leasehold or is it going to be a fee simple?
That would be determined by the, by the legislature. For any sale or lease beyond five years, that's your call from here in this body.
Okay.
And Ancestral Lands, the resolution we passed was endorse both, either a sale or lease of the property.
Okay, so the nature of the estate has not been established yet? Fee, lease, whatever?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are you familiar with, you know, we've talked a little bit about this. Are you familiar with this thing called the Matrix Study?
I've read part of it, the part that affects the property. We, Ancestral Lands provided information to the Department of Land Management when requested. We were not a part of the Matrix Study. We didn't provide any information to them. In fact, I didn't see the document until it was placed online.
Okay, well, thank you for mentioning that, but, all right, but you're aware that a group called Matrix did an analysis for the best area to lay the hospital down, is that correct?
Yes, after, yeah, after I read the document.
And you just mentioned that it's online, which is true. If anybody out here is listening, you know, and watching, please go to the Governor's website and read the Matrix Plan. You know, this is, this is for all of our futures. It's, it's easy to find. The Governor's got it up on our website. It's 105 pages. You may or may not want to download it, but you should certainly read it. I have, and I think every senator here has, and there's a lot of valuable information in it. One piece of information I discovered, because the Chair here, you know, she put up Slide 5, which was a comparison of the Adakau Crown property and the Tumuning property. And I just, you know, just did a real quick analysis, exclusive of the utilities, you know, because they're basically equal utilities. The problem is they all require hookups, so that's what that's about. If you exclude the utilities, Adakau is better or equal to Tumuning in 67% of the criteria. Based on that, it just seems absolutely clear that the Adakau Crown is where the hospital should go. I mean, it's head and shoulders above the Tumuning property, and that's just based on, that's just based on what we looked at on Slide number 5, 67%. So, I guess I don't have another comment on that, really. And thank you very much for your responses, sir.
Thank you, Senator Fisher.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. And I do encourage everyone to look at the Matrix Study themselves because the data and sometimes the interpretation is very different than what is actually written in there. Senator Barnett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think that is part of the confusion is we literally have a black and white study in front of us that the people of Guam paid for that indicates that the Ipau Point is actually, the Ipau Point location is superior to the Adakau location. And despite that being right in front of our face in black and white, we continue to hear muddying of the water, misinformation, and in some instances...
I take exception to that. Just use your calculator.
Senator Fisher, I'm going to read the study. Slide number 5 says, "Total points for Ipau on the criteria established by the Government of Guam was 34 points. Total points for Adakau was 30 points." And then they give all the details. Thank you. Barnett, Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam. As I was saying before, I was rudely interrupted by my colleague. It's clear when you look at the data and the study that the people of Guam paid for, the facts, in my opinion, support the Ipau Point location. And I think what, what we're seeing and where this difficulty and this debate and discussion is coming from is that we have this twisting of the data to suit the agenda of the medical complex at Adakau. And that makes it very difficult to have a productive discussion, Madam Chair. Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Senator Tiedegui?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Birch, Director Birch, is there a discrepancy between the cost of what these properties are valued at? Between one, I'm hearing several numbers coming out as far as the value of these properties?
We're currently waiting for an appraisal of the lots. They are currently zoned as agricultural. If a hospital were to be placed there, Mr. Borja could verify, it would probably have to be rezoned maybe to M1. And that part will come up with the negotiations, whether it's with ancestral lands negotiating it or something that would be taken up here by the legislature. We will hopefully get that appraisal out soon.
Can you tell me what appraisal company you'll be going to?
Yeah, we preleased it with Public Works. I remember the first name was Surety, but it's not the title company. It's another, I don't have it right offhand. I know that we did cut and issue the purchase order for it already, and that was about a month ago.
Okay. Would you be getting at least a couple different companies to do this appraisal?
We can do that, yes.
I think so. I think it would be...
It's required by law to do two appraisals.
Okay, great. That's good to hear. This is my second time attending this hearing for this and a lot of the information that you brought forward. I appreciate you clarifying certain things, but with the Matrix, you said that you, you've only read partially of the Matrix report, you know, and I'm hoping, Mr. Birch, you'll read it all because it's really, there's a lot of people who are relying on you, those who have never received their properties back especially, you know, and the ability to use these Crown lands to actually, even though it is Crown lands, it's the opportunity to also put it in a, the ability to put it in a hat and draw, what's it called, a, losing my, what that word is, just basically drawing to try and get property. Because property is key here for our people. It's not necessarily the money. I know that you have $16 million in a bank account, but to the people of Guam, you know, Guam is 35 miles long, eight miles wide. We even have a hard time finding a place to put, you know, our trash, and that's growing. And it's going faster than, than we anticipated on finding properties. So, if we have the ability to give land to our people who lost land, you know, I think that should always be priority of your agency, and I'm sure it is. This is just an opportunity to, to come forward, but, you know, the reality is, land is very scarce, and if we can build up instead of outward so that others may have, and, and it's logically and economically more feasible, I think that's something that we need to look in and the people of Guam need to understand. We are not reining, you know, federal funds anymore, and I doubt if the US government has enough to give out because they're having troubles themselves. And for us to, you know, rely on an opportunity for more federal funds? I don't think that's going to happen. Just look at the US right now and their financial situation.
Yes, Senator, the reason Ancestral Lands has Crown lands is so that for those people who, for example, those people owned property up at Tejon, where the airport's at, they'll never get their property back.
No, I understand.
And so, the reason we have that is so that we can at least compensate them in other ways, monetarily if so possible.
Exactly.
There was an attempt headed by Senator Lambrina, we call the Tejon Trust, to give property, actually all the property under ancestral lands to the Tejon Trust, but that was thrown out by court and declared unconstitutional because it left out people whose properties were taken elsewhere. So, that's why we have Crown lands, is to find another way to compensate the folks that will never get their lands back. And what we have to do is define and say, who are the beneficiaries of the trust? And then we can move forward with the land bank rules and regulations. So, so we can't technically, from ancestral lands?
Right.
Give you land because you lost land?
Right, but, but because what, it's a federal concern? Is that what you're saying? You mean this body cannot create legislation? If, if I may, Mr. Birch, because the Tejon properties is already under scrutiny because the land was returned back to the Government of Guam for the use of an airport. But through legislation, Mark Forbes and several other senators decided to, no, let's give it back. And this is done by federal statute on how that land was returned at the airport. It's strictly to be used for airport. These are people living in, in these houses that are residents. So, are you telling me that we can't as a body? Take Crown lands and actually put it in like a, I keep forgetting, losing the word, what I'm looking for, but some kind of way to give land to those who would never get their land back?
It was a local case.
Okay.
It was a court case that made that decision, that declared it unconstitutional, not a federal case.
Then that, that answers my question, because it can be done to a body.
Because you would, yeah, you would disenfranchise other people outside of the Tejon Trust that have also, you know, who are also beneficiaries.
I found the word, it was lottery, you know, some kind of lottery, that's, that's what I was looking for, you know? But there, there are options out there. Like I said, I think the most important thing of your constituents, you know, those who lost, lost land is, is not really the, the money aspect of it. It's the property itself that's more valuable.
Yes, I agree.
More valuable, you know, to keep going. So, and I know you're doing everything you can to assist them, and I know they, you get these stories coming too, but I, I hope that you stay strong and positive that, you know, we can help our people in returning some of this land or providing a lottery of some sort, you know? But thank you so much, Mr. Birch. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator. I want to clarify so there's no misunderstanding. The law says land returned to the Government of Guam, that is not returned to the ancestral landowners, that they must be compensated by either land or monetary compensation. That's what the corpus of the trust is for. That's the land we're talking about in Bill 184. That land is supposed to be used to either give them land or give them compensation as part of the land. So, it includes Tejon landowners, other landowners, like where the Army Guard facilities are. The land, the lawsuit was because they were only going to compensate Tejon landowners out of the trust and not take care of the other known landowners such as the military guard facilities, landowners. And so, we have to take care of all of those landowners equally, and that's why we talked about earlier, dividing the money up between that many landowners. 3,000 lots, he estimated at the last hearing, are the, those are the beneficiaries by statute now of those Crown lands.
Thank you for that clarification, Madam Speaker.
The 3,000 lot landowners.
And again, it's, it's, I was talking about a lottery that could be forthcoming, so I appreciate it.
Another idea, yes. There was also a bill, as this chairperson sent, sent to the legislature last term and this term. The bill was significantly revised this term, but the rules and regs were rejected by the... The bill was significantly revised this term, but the rules and regs were rejected by the AG because they had proposed to compensate people outside of what the law provided. We were only by law going to compensate those whose land had been returned to government of Guam and not returned to the ancestral landowners. But the rules and the current proposal is to compensate even those whose property had not been returned to the government of Guam, such as Taragi landowners and Anderson Air Force Base landowners. So that's correct. And that hearing is still pending. So thank you. Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I certainly appreciate Mr. Burge in providing the information. I think all this really comes down to, and what it will come down to, is our position collectively, at least enough votes, to determine where we want to locate the new hospital. I appreciate all the background and the history with regards to the role of ancestral lands and the purpose of the property and what has or has not been done to address those that are eligible for compensation because their lands may have been taken. And that's really all of this is about. I mean, we can go on all day about it. And it's a question of, do we support the governor's initiative to have a medical complex? Some do, some of us don't. Some of us simply want to build a hospital without all the attachments to it because I myself am concerned about our inability consistently to address proper funding to the current hospital that we have. We were just here less than a couple of months ago, you know, trying to address and did address legislation to fund and pay $30 million in vendor payables that were owed at a time when we have, you know, we brag about $100 million of excess funds coming into the government of Guam. And with all that, we had $30 million in payables to the existing hospital, complaints by healthcare workers that they did not have the supplies and resources and equipment that they needed to take care of patients right now here at this moment in time. So, you know, for me, I look at this bill as it, I understand the governor will advocate her position as she continues to do it every opportunity, as she should. And it just comes down to the decision whether or not there's eight votes in this legislature that agree that we should build a medical complex, be it in Adakau or wherever else it may be. And in a sort of, for me personally, be close to my house. But, you know, looking at the bigger picture, the bigger picture, you know, is the infrastructure there? What is the cost of that going to be? Can our people afford it? I mean, I'm practical. Can we afford it? You know, will our grandchildren be able to afford it? I mean, we're going through an unprecedented time right now because of the pandemic, because of the military buildup that will decline in the near future. And can we pay for it? If we can't do it now with all this excess funds, it makes me wonder, is building a new structure going to address the ability to properly man a hospital? Make sure that we can pay for it? Make sure we can pay for the medical personnel that are going to be needed? Make sure we can pay for the medicines and the equipment that are going to be needed? We can't do it now with any comfort because I'm sure in a few months, another year, the hospital, as it has been over the years, and I've been here over the years, will again be in a situation where they will be in debt and they're not paying their vendors. It's an ongoing cycle, even in the time of plenty money. So that, for me, is a practical decision, whether or not we should locate it in Adakau or wherever. Do we put it up in Gigo? Do we put it up in Dedido? Do we put it up connecting to the back road in Mingi Lo? So for me, I appreciate the background and information you're very patiently providing to us. But I'm sure at the end of the day, it's going to be the decisions we make as whether or not we have eight votes to decide where that new hospital will be located. But I appreciate your testimony and the information you're providing for identification. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Brown.
Thank you, Senator Brown. I had some questions, Director. So in your letter of November 14th yesterday, you stated that the comprehensive evaluation process took into consideration factors such as size, location, proximity to utilities, population density, development constraints, traffic conditions, arterial roads and access. And based on that analysis, the determination was made that these lots were the most suitable for the medical campus. I asked you at November 1, when you stated something similar, if you have that evaluation because it differs from what we have received from Matrix where Eagles Field was ranked first, EPOA Point was ranked second, and Adakau was ranked third. Is there an evaluation that exists that ranks them differently?
Madam Speaker, that's pretty much my assessment after I reviewed and looked at the properties as they are affected by the properties under the jurisdictions of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. So I tend to agree with Senator Fisher's-
Under the-
Yes, with concerning ancestral lands and property within its jurisdiction. We do have other properties around the island. Ancestral Land is jurisdiction over about 1,888 lots or acres. And these were the best ones that we had available that we saw that-
So you're saying this evaluation is out of the ancestral lands that you looked at, you decided that these were the best in relation to size, location, proximity to-
Using what I read in the Matrix report, that's, it met all the requirements, what was required in the Matrix when I submitted the properties to land management. They submitted it to Matrix.
Right.
I read it after, but when they asked for, and they gave me basically the requirements, something central, something near utilities, property near roadways, having access with little or no condemnation involved.
Yes.
That, those were what, the instructions that were given me, and that's the way we came up with this. We have limited staff, and we did search properties available under ancestral lands. And that's how we came up with that. And then when we reviewed the Matrix report, that's where we were assured that we had the proper lot or properties within that made, or were qualified to be used for that.
All right.
And you have to admit, I mean, whether it's one, two, or three, it depends from a perspective of where you live and how you see things. We may agree on one thing that we definitely need in a hospital, but it seems like here we have a disagreement about location and which is best for each one of us and the people that we know and that we serve. So as far as ancestral lands is concerned, I agree with the perspective, and I see things as Senator Fisher mentioned earlier.
Mr. Burge, can you just please answer my question? Is there an evaluation that exists in addition to the Matrix evaluation?
I don't have one different from the Matrix.
All right. So you gave a list of ancestral lands properties to Department of Land Management that you thought met Department of Land Management's criteria?
Yes.
They took that, they submitted their own evaluation and submitted their own evaluations to Matrix. You weren't part of that. You weren't part of the Matrix or the hospital task force. And now we have a Matrix study that ranks Adakau parcel number three. And I'm just asking if we have any study that says otherwise?
No.
Okay. So Adakau is ranked number one in certain areas. Adequate site size, it's ranked the same as Eagles Field. It, property value impact, and that's because we're proposing to put $100 million of infrastructure into agriculturally zoned property. It's going to raise the property values in that area. Future expansion capability, again, because of the size. And the fourth area is current traffic conditions. And Matrix says they did not study traffic conditions, but they did do the drive time analysis. I don't believe that was submitted by any other government agency, or at least I've seen no documents when we asked. So that looks like that was determined by Matrix. But those are the only four criteria where the Adakau property exceeds EPOA Point. My concern is, like Senator Brown said, is when we're going to make a determination on this, it's going to be based on facts. What are the costs versus one area versus the other, like cost benefit analysis? What are the benefits? And we can make our perspectives and our opinions, and I like it this way. However, as lawmakers, I'm trying to make it as much of objective analysis as we can get on the table. And then it's going to be up to every individual senator to put their values into that. What do they value more, right? Matrix determined the values based on the criteria that was given to them by the government of Guam. And if we are going to value something more than what the criteria was given to them, that's something I think that should be transparent. There were, the people who filed the claim on lot number 2481 that you've asked us to include as part of the bill, you said those are not valid claims. Are they settled by the commission? I mean, is that like a ruling that has happened or is it potential claims?
We went through and we prepared and we worked together with land management to develop the abstracts of title for this. And while I haven't had a commission meeting, I won't have one until the 28th to present that to them. I will do that at the next meeting. I believe it's on the 29th for the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission. But we have done our work for that.
All right.
I have my land agent, Joey Leon Guero, here if you would like to ask him the details of how we came about that decision.
No, I trust your decision. My only issue is we've given notice on the other lots. Lot 2481 was not included in the title when we put out all our public notice. And I'd like to know if we can know the people who are filing claims and give them notice, or maybe you can send that to me privately and I will also send them notice. I just want to give them an opportunity to also state their position for the senators.
Ms. DeBorah says he has, right? He may have the information. We did the abstracts. It should be included in the abstracts that we sent you.
Have they been informed of your decision or your, what your-
Not until I informed the board, but I can assure you that our board will agree with us after we-
They will know about the board meeting in advance? So they can attend and object if they want to?
Oh, yeah. I mean, if they filed, they have every right to, you know, to file a claim. But just because you file a claim for property does not mean that you have any legitimate rights to ownership.
I know. That's not my question.
But that's the reason why it was not included in the actual bill because we needed to clear that property.
I know. That's not my question. My question is, I understand why now you want to include it in the bill and that you've done research and you're claiming it's clear. And I just want to know if the landowners who are making these claims or the purported landowners have been informed. We're going to be including that in our bill on our side, and we want to know if they've had any notice of any of your decision that they're not entitled to this property before we make a decision on it. The terms, this bill is a little unusual because it doesn't tell us whether it's going to be a sale or a lease. It tells us we are going to authorize a sale or a lease, and you are going to decide. The bill is written, doesn't tell us how many years it's going to be. It says we are authorizing a sale of a lease for a time period that we have no say in and that you are going to decide with negotiations with the governor. It also says we're not going to know the terms of the sale price or the lease price. So I just wanted to know from you, why can't we get the terms that you want in form of a bill? And we approve that? That's how it's normally supposed to work. We get the terms and we say yes to 30 years at this price and we're done, like that. As opposed to, we're completely abdicating out of the process and no, there's, there's no, nothing we can answer to the people of Guam as to, or the beneficiaries of that trust as to what's going to happen on their behalf. You understand why I'm a little bit uncertain about that? I prefer to just be able to settle on the terms, you give it to us, and we either approve or disapprove that.
Would you like us to go into negotiations or, you know, prior to the authorization from the legislature? Is that what you're instructing me?
I didn't hear your question.
Yeah.
What are you asking? No, you have to conclude negotiations and come up with a proposal, right? But that's what I'm asking. It's like, how long do you think that's going to take?
Yeah, we'll be able to provide perhaps a, once we receive the appraisals and the surveys upon those completion. We don't have that at this point, but I understand they're about completed.
They're about to complete the appraisal?
The appraisal and the surveys, yeah.
And the surveys? Okay.
We're hoping to have those soon. We don't have them right now at this point in time.
Okay.
But we do have the location, the approximate size of the property, and the availability of the properties.
I heard, I overheard you earlier talking about the appraisal is not done through GALC, it's done through DPW?
Yes. We, DPW was the one that placed the RFP or the request for, you know, for qualified appraisers. And then, of course, we're going to pay for it through funds provided to us from the governor's office.
So you don't have those funds yet?
No, we have the funds now.
Oh, okay.
And it's been provided.
All right. And then why DPW? Why not you? Why are you not selecting the appraisal company? It's for your beneficiaries.
Normally, well, I don't have the staff, to be honest with you. As of today, I've notified, because our budget was cut, I notified one of my staff. We have five members. I'm reducing staff so that I can make it through the fiscal year. I've budgeted that agency for only three quarters, but to make the fourth quarter, I'm forced to terminate one employee because our budget was severely cut for various reasons. These are tough decisions. So I have one land agent, two land agents, one three, one two, and a PC three and admin assistant. That's all I have available to me. I don't have the people, the expertise to do what you ask, so I outsource. I use GITA, Public Works, and any agency out there to reduce my overhead costs of operations. That's the bottom line. I say my budget was slashed because not only were we cut and we received less than what we got in FY '23 with the increase in the 22% pay increase and everything, I have to reduce. And I was told at the last oversight with you, Madam Chair, that you don't see us getting any federal funds. You don't want us to access any funds that we raised through any leases or interest income that we're able to do and-
It's not me, Mr. Burge, it's the law. The law says that the income from your income-producing crown lands is supposed to go towards the beneficiaries of the trust.
So that's why I use-
And so we have made an exception and allowed you to get the operating funds out of one of those properties and in fact, several of those properties.
So I'm forced to terminate one employee.
So that's the big exception.
Reducing my staff, and I don't have the staff now. I'll have less within the next week or so.
The question was to you, just why is DPW, who is not part of this transaction, the one doing the appraisal of the property, as opposed to you who is representing the beneficiaries?
It was the only way I can do it, by outsourcing. It was either GITA or Public Works.
All right. But you have the money from the governor to pay for the appraisal?
Yes.
Yes. So it's money should not be the issue.
Why I can't do is I don't have the personnel.
Okay.
And it'll be even less after this month.
All right.
And while you increase for most other agencies-
Thank you, Mr. Burge.
We make our money. We're not on the general fund, but we do make enough to keep our people. And so if you want me to get the work done, allow me to have the personnel to do it. That's the bottom line.
I believe you do have personnel. We have, like I said, the statute provides operating funds for the Ancestral Lands Commission out of money that's supposed to be going to beneficiaries of the trust. And instead of going to the beneficiaries, it's going towards operations. And as you said, pay raises and other things have increased your operations, and that's just less money to the trust. So I'm not doing anything. You're just following the law.
I'm following the law and I'm reducing staff.
That's what's going on. Thank you, Mr. Burge.
It's not something I look forward to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it's just really ironic to me that we're going to say we have pay raises and so we have to let go of employees, and then we have pay raises and we can't pay beneficiaries of the trust. That's something wrong. But we will look at that as we talked about at the oversight hearing. That's not really the topic of this discussion today. Thank you.
Plus, I took a card.
Thank you, Mr. Burge. Director Borah, we will accept your testimony now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could ask for some corrections, they may seem minor, but you stated when you opened this hearing that it was 9:35. I believe the time when you opened this hearing was 8:35. And then secondly-
Thank you.
And then secondly, on the November 1 hearing, what is posted on the legislative website when you opened the first day of the hearing, it only shows Senator Sabina coming in late. It doesn't show the presence of me in that area, so you might want to check to see if that video was doctored.
Could you repeat that again?
When I downloaded the, the public hearing that you had, the video on YouTube-
On November 1, the public hearing?
On November 1.
On the Bill 184?
Yes. It starts out with Senator Sabina coming in. It didn't show the beginning of the hearing when you called it to order and where I was in. So if you might check that. If it's not, I apologize, but the version that we downloaded only showed the point where Senator Sabina was coming in.
Is there, is the, my recollection is that that hearing, we had an oversight hearing earlier that day, and then we continued into the hearing for Bill 184? And then I think we might have taken a recess or something and then came back again?
I have the video of what I downloaded if you want to-
Okay, we'll check. Okay, we'll check. We'll double check that. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, but thank you for that. I just want to make sure that the video wasn't doctored to put me out.
Well, it definitely wasn't doctored by me.
Secondly, this thing here about what did Matrix analyze...
Can we just take a one-minute recess, Mr. Borja? I'd like to take a one-minute recess.
Sure.
All right, we're back from recess. Audio, are we good? Thank you. We're back from recess. We took a short recess to check with audio. Let the Committee on Rules chair, please.
Thank you.
The allegation of a doctored video.
Yeah, that's highly offensive. To my staff, we don't docter videos. We conduct the hearings and then we subsequently post the hearings in their entirety. Mr. Borja, the video that you're referencing is actually a continuation of the hearing. That's a Part 2. There's a Part 1 that was also posted on November 1st. So there's no doctering of videos that occurs here.
And we downloaded both.
Mr. Borja, there's no doctering of videos that occurs here. And I think the clip you downloaded was the Part 2, sir.
We downloaded both, Senator.
All right, well, we'll review it as well, the Part 2 video.
Review it and I apologize if that's not the case.
We have to end the videos after four hours and cut and take a recess, so they reset the audio. The second Part 2 did begin with Senator Perez. You're right.
We just verified it at the AV booth, ma'am, and it's on the YouTube channel. Thank you.
All right, so we proceed. Mr. Borja, please proceed.
Okay, and I have a download copy too before I brought this up. Secondly, the statement that this site was not analyzed by Matrix and that I said that it wasn't analyzed by Matrix, you can play back that video.
No.
What I said, Senator, is that the map shown in the Matrix report, it's not from Land Management. Because when we gave our analysis to Matrix, this is what we gave them. Now, what map they printed on there, I'm not responsible for it. And you can see clearly by the unique shape of the property that it is Edagaga. And throughout the Matrix report, it refers to 102 acres.
Yes, Mr. Borja, I agree. And I, that's what I tried to clarify this morning, that you were the one confirming that this is the property studied by Matrix. You said that at the last hearing. I confirmed that this morning. And I said, "The map that Matrix is using is not the maps that you had submitted according to what you gave us."
I think you said the map that was given to Matrix by Land Management, which is not the case. In any way, we can go ahead and move on, Madam Chair. I would prefer, as a researcher, that we don't call places place name. Even EPOA Point was incorrect. In this case, fortunately or unfortunately, we have lot numbers. And the bill does state lot numbers. I would just call this site 2453, 2453-1, 2454, 2455, 2457, 2457-1. It is long, but that's the name. That's the lot number for the place. And throughout the records, even those that are not recorded at Land Management, it refers to this site as those lot numbers. Edagaga, you know, some people make fun of it. That's a morrow word. Basically means red dirt, but that could be diddy-doo also. My apologies to Senator San Augustine. 2481 was not included in there because the Ancestral Lands Commission Director did not feel that the title was cleared up. There have been claims of interest filed at Land Management for that lot. As a matter of fact, not only a claim of interest, but a quitclaim deed. A portion of that lot was sold already. And the sad thing about that sale, even though it's a quitclaim deed, is the guy that sold it, the guy that sold it included other ancestral lands that his family rightly owns. And let me repeat that again. This gentleman had a quitclaim deed, sold a portion of Lot 2481, and in that deed, he also sold a portion of other properties that I believe the family rightly owns. So what's the big deal? He's put a cloud on the title of those other lots. There's no way that Land Management will give title to those lots that they rightfully deserve. That guy just ruined it for his family, I'm sorry to say. But, so that's the issue with 2481. Director Birch wanted to be sure, so he ordered, I believe, three abstracts of title from the three available title companies here in Guam to make sure that everybody, if they're not on the same page, at least they're on the same paragraph. We also at Land Management conducted our own research. But we did not look at the abstracts of title that Mr. Birch received because I don't want to contaminate my researchers. You don't want to know what you're headed down to. Just put it in there. Whatever the records show, that's what it is. And in one of those lots, it did say ostensible owner, Edward, I believe, Soriano Soriano. So I questioned Mr. Birch. I said, "Mr. Birch, there's an owner on that lot. That's what the records show." The researcher at Ancestral Lands, Mr. Leon Guerrero, said, "No, that's a lease." Government at that time, Naval Government of Guam, was also leasing properties that they rightfully owned. We have a copy of that lease. We have two or three people in that area that were leasing property. They don't own it. They were leasing it. So it does say in the document, though, ostensible owner. Some of us may not know what ostensible means. Ostensible means apparently we think that they're the owners. But that ostensible owner language in there shot down by the copy of the lease by Mr. Soriano that he got, Mr. Leon Guerrero got on that. So I just propose that if we talk about Edagaga, let's just use lot numbers. It's surveyed. It has lot numbers on. It's a long name. Some of us have long names to begin with. So I would just recite each one of those lots so that it doesn't hurt them. Thirdly, if you can put up that slide by, or map by GWA, I submit that this is the second bum map that you got from GWA. Our surveyors went out, and that's the Eagles Field area there that they showed. Land Management went out there and surveyed Eagles Field Lot. What's that got to do with it? Well, in the map or the graphic that GWA presented to you, it showed two gravity sewers. There's actually three down Lalo Street. Why maybe they didn't put it on there? Because they're encroaching on property that's under the Navy. They have a sewer line in there that they did not get permission to put on. Granted, it's original landowner land, but legally, it's not an easement for them. They're actually encroaching. But my understanding from the Navy is that it's kind of like, okay. So if you look at the, if you look at the Matrix Report, on page 3-3, you see a graphic representation of Eagles Field. And on page 3-4, you see an actual map. On the left-hand side of that graphic and on the left-hand side of that map is Lot 5RW, 2.9 acres. What's that for? That right of way is to connect to the sewer line over at Lalo Street, not the other two sites that they were proposing on there. So Matrix was aware of that because it's in their report. But why would surveying a piece of property have that thing sticking out like an antenna on that? It's to legitimize GWA's illegal encroachment, or whatever you call it, into that property that was on there. And maybe why they didn't put it in the map that they gave you, Senator? Maybe they don't want it known. They actually came to Land Management and said, "Man, we're encroaching there. Can you, in the mapping of that Eagles Field area, can you put that 75-foot easement in there to legitimize that sewer line? And by the way, you can use it also." Now, it's interesting to note that on that GWA graphic, they put graphic, gravity fed or gravity sewers. What's the other thing besides gravity sewers? Force main, where there's actually pressure to push it down. So this Eagle site actually has two accesses to sewer system. One is through Mangilo, and the other one is through Lalo Street. They both feed down eventually to Agania, but the one in Barigada is, the capacity on it is being useless. So GWA said, you know, "Go down there, by the way." So that's the utilities on that.
Sorry, Mr. Borja, can you just please point to us where you're referring to in the Matrix study? I don't see that.
Page 3-4.
The sewer systems.
And page 3-3.
It shows an easement, but not a sewer. Does it say sewer? Or except whatever you were saying?
Well, the map shows...
What?
If you look at the map...
Drainage? Stormwater?
On 3-4. Now, they didn't put the whole map in there that shows the legends on the site as to what those dots are. If you look closely, those are manholes, you know.
It says stormwater drainage, yes, but not sewer or the other one you were talking about?
No, enlarge it and you'll see.
All right, well, maybe you can provide that map to us and we can enlarge it for all the senators.
I suggest you call up GPA and ask them, "Is there a sewer line there?"
Who?
Call up GWA, rather. Call them up.
Do you have this map? You said this was provided...
Right here.
By somebody to Matrix, this map, 3-4?
Yeah, we provided it to Matrix.
All right, you provided it to Matrix, so can we see, right. Those two, we said, we pointed out early, but he's saying there's three, but we're not finding it on the map he's pointing to.
Three what?
Three gravity sewer...
Oh, that's in the map that you put up.
Can we put the map up? The map from GWA, please?
I believe it's the second graphic you put up.
Yes. So, and where in Matrix study do they point to that third sewer line?
It's on page 3-4. It's a map, it's a survey that Land Management did.
Yes, but what it says is, "The general slope drainage locations have been planned. Site drainage flows towards the western part of the property. Stormwater can be contained on-site to avoid overburning."
Are we looking at the same page, ma'am, Madam Chair?
3-4, yes. I'm reading the topography, the caption below.
Figure 3.2?
Yes, I just read the paragraph below.
Yeah, well, look at the map. See, there it is, okay?
Okay, yes.
There it's not.
So we're talking about the white arrows on the left side of this map. They point to two, what GWA labeled as...
If you know where Lalo Street, that's where... So where it says nearest GWA gravity sewer? If you look directly left, straight shot to the left, that's where the encroachment comes in.
That's where, you're saying there's another gravity sewer that's not indicated on the map?
That's not indicated on the map.
Okay, on this GWA map, but you're saying it is indicated on the Eagles Field study? I don't see that.
It's on the Eagles Field map that we did.
The one that you just pointed us to? Yes, so I'm reading it. And it talks about site drainage and stormwater may be available, but it doesn't talk about sewer.
If you enlarge it, Madam Chair, where it says symbols.
Is that on the top right? I asked you if you could...
Top, top left.
Bottom left, okay.
Bottom left. It says symbols.
Yes.
And then you look at those symbols and then you compare them to what is on the map, that'll show.
Okay, so Matrix did know about the additional sewer line that you're saying is in place, gravity sewer?
What I'm saying is, GWA didn't put it on their graphic.
Okay, but you're saying Matrix did know about that and they still made their estimates for the cost of utility improvements?
Yeah, and you know this utilities thing? If utilities come into the area, it's not only going to service a new hospital or new facility on there. It services, it's going to service the whole thing. Now, we at Land Management, we approved the entire recycling facility that EPA is not allowing them to open up because commercial establishments and warehouses have to be connected to the public sewer. So what's the hardest thing to get rid of environmentally?
Are you asking us questions?
Yeah, I'm asking questions.
Please, this is a hearing. If you could provide your testimony.
Tires, that's the hardest thing to get rid of. What do you do with all these tires coming in, you know? So, but what I'm saying is that because of a lack of sewer in the area, the occupancy permit and the, for that tire recycling facility is being held up, you know, because on that. So this utilities thing in this area, it's going to cost more, granted, than it is going to cost over at, over at EPOA Point, yes. But you're going to get more bang for your buck up there at the area because it opens up for developing that area. Recently, you just had a gas station put up there, and I believe they were allowed to put an above-ground septic tank. So yes, utilities in the area. And you know, Senator Barnett is right, you know, on this Matrix report. We look at what is, what's kind of good for us, what's kind of good for our perspective. But if you look at that Matrix report, what's the highest points? What site got the highest points? It's Eagle Field, not only by four points, but by eight points. So, yeah, I agree with him that, you know, it kind of convoluted on here. And even the Matrix report, you know, when it identifies the area that they did, you can tell that it's wrong because it says something about the Adakal site having a radar site on it. It doesn't. It doesn't. The radar site is down there by Eagles Field. There's only one radar facility in that hole alongside Route 50. There's only one radar facility in that hole alongside Route 15. So, yeah, there's, you know, things that, little things that may be, may be wrong with it. But if you look at that spreadsheet, you know, and I'm, I'm impressed by that spreadsheet, really, that, that Matrix did and, and like that. But, you know, look at it, it's 38. And then look at the comments that it says. "All three sites similarly, you know, meet the parameters of, of the, the need for the hospital up there." And it also says that drive time, I believe, is the most critical one. So I kind of totaled it, you know, difference of one point here, one point there. But Eagles Field is like 38 points. That's four points higher than the, than the, than the others. So that's, you know, the issue of utilities on there. So let me go now to my testimony. Hopefully, we'll get out of here before 12, or 2, whatever. But so, you know, so I'm sticking to the land issues. Real estate is always location, location, location. But not only location, it's, do you also plan to, to build? Whether it expand, whether it's a house or a commercial facility? Can you build sideways? Can you build vertically? That's, that's always the case, you know? So this site, you know, Mr. Birch probably forgot the time that we sat down and we actually did a matrix, a Gov Guam matrix. Not Matrix the company, not Matrix the document. But we actually put down a, a matrix. And what we included in those matrix, now this is coming from Land Management with feedback from GIDA and from Ancestral Lands Commission. We looked at size, jurisdiction, conveyance method, access, secondary access, topography, utilities, current uses, adjacent uses. And I will submit that the matrix that we did was on an eight and a half by 11, eight and a half by 14 paper. So we gave that to Matrix. They knew what site to do. So they took our matrix, the document, which was eight and a half by 14 paper, and basically made it like this. And it cut off some of the information on that. It's actually a three-page, a two-page document, but some of the pages were too long. Now, I tried to print one this morning and it still wouldn't show. We looked at 16 sites. We just didn't look and say, oh, let's go to Eagles Field because there were three sites that were offered by the military. The governor actually wanted Ungaguan. Where's Ungaguan? Ungaguan is over there, right across the, the, the post office, right next to a commercial tire level, Route 16, right next to it, very much centered in the island. But the military said, no, that's a training area. They gave us three other options on that. One was up at Nimitz Hill, across, across the top of the mar. We threw that one out right away. To access it, you've got to go up a hill, you've got to go up a hill, both sides. More importantly, it's in the flight zone, approach zone. We all know, what is it? Korean Airlines 803? It's right in that area. Threw that one out right away. The other ones were, the other one was, one of them was Eagles Field, which we basically said we looked at. And the other one was South Finnegatan, which was out of the location parameter, you know. So, so we did have a study that we did internally in Gov Guam. Wasn't hired, you know, anybody, even before Matrix came out. And Matrix, I think, only came out here, I don't know, two, three times. I've only met them twice on it. They did have a local representative who was always checking, have you done it yet? Have you done it yet? Can I have it? So the DOM process was to determine parameters. Location was one of them. Governor wanted it centralized. Size, be able to expand. We even looked at horizontal and vertical space. You don't want to build too close to the airport, you have that issue. Or in this case, if Eagles Field, radar. Intended use was a parameter. This thing about zoning the property or rezoning the property, don't forget what you did when you did the Okudu Power Station. If you put in the bill that eventually becomes law, the use of the property, that's zoning. You just zoned that property by land use. So you say that that property shall be used for a power plant? Yes. You're still going to have to come back for variances. Your stack that is 150 feet, and in this case, for the hospital, there might still be other variances that you have to come out to. So we took the existing acreage of GMH now, including the, the parking lot, Guam Behavioral Welfare Clinic. We estimated that that might be the size of a lab, not to move the Behavioral Welfare Clinic. And we took the, the acreage of the Public Health Building. We all know the Public Health Building. You know, it's always full, parking too. And they provide a lot of different services. Even dentists, I believe, they are not just vital statistics. And we multiplied that by four. We know that if we're going to build something at, for a hospital at the existing facility now, you're still going to have a parking problem. You're still going to have a parking. You're still going to have a problem with, with your materials coming in, you know, your workers, where they're going to park in there. So we multiplied it by four. And in addition to that, GMH, Public Health Labs, and a medical commercial plaza. For what? For clinics, for private clinics. We, when we were doing the, the Eagles Field negotiation, we asked the federal government, could we, could we possibly sublease to a private entity at a lower cost to come on over? We've got some cheap land over here to set up your clinic. And they said that they'll look at it. And if it's something like that, they might have to, have to put it into the National Defense Act. So, so there was a lot of review work, analysis work on the sites on it by GIDA and by Ancestral Lands. But Mr. Birch is correct, you know. Were there any studies that said that that's a good site? Not by a private company, but by internally here at Gov Guam that included GIDA, Ancestral Lands staff, and Department of Land Management staff. So that's how we came out of this location. Our analysis showed the second best site is Adakau Edagaga 2453541. We gave that, all, all that information over to, to Matrix. And of course, that's what they came out with, is that the second best site in terms of their, whatever you call this report? You know, it came out using their matrix system of one point here, three points there. Yeah, that's, that's how it came out. And they put it out on the table, that's what they found. We found internally at Gov Guam that the Adakau Edagaga site came out number two. And of course, came out at number three, is the EPO Point.
All right, Mr. Borja.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you just point us to, did you give us those studies that you said you did? Because we asked for those. Is that what we have? We have the studies done by Gov Guam that show that Adakau Crowns are number two rated property by the government of Guam, in contradiction to what Matrix rated it?
Actually, I didn't. And that was because I had it at the first hearing you had, but the time of the presentation.
So we did send letters and we asked you at the last hearing to provide those, right?
Oh, we sent this to you. I sent it to you.
So is this the study? What, the study that you're claiming where Adakau came in number two? Because Matrix study says Adakau's number three.
It's this one?
Draft March 2022 Medical Campus brand?
And then we have another one here.
Yeah, which one says Adakau's number two? That you just, you just said, I know. I asked for all the internal studies with these agencies so that, because the Matrix study conflicts with what they're saying.
It's here, I believe it's slide 11. And as we're going on, you know, we actually didn't rank it. We put it as option B. So option A was the Eagles Field, and then right below that is option B, which was Adakau Crown Lands. A previous version of this actually had option B, option two, the existing site of the, the hospital at Oka Point. But when we started digging into the fault line issue, they did a study, the hospital did a study, I believe by URS, and they said that there's no issue at Oka Point for, for a fault. The fault was over at EPO Point. Now, we're looking at experience when they built the four Emerald Towers. They had to negotiate something with the Chamorro Land Trust to use EPO Point as a staging area. And in return, that corporation promised to fence in EPO Point. They never did.
Mr. Borja, back to the study.
Yes.
This is what you gave Matrix? You gave them this document that you gave us? This is what I asked you for, the documents that you gave to Matrix? And you gave them this?
I gave them this.
Without any, like, criteria that you narrowed your list down using?
Oh, yes, the criteria is in the, is in our matrix.
Is in what?
Our matrix document.
Your matrix? You said you didn't do a matrix. Where's that?
Oh, we did. It should be in the documents I sent to you, yeah.
You mean?
So the sites, the location, the size, development constraints, cost for off-site utilities, impact on surrounding property values, short-term construction impacts, opportunities gained or lost.
All right, so this is the spreadsheet without a, it's on the drive. These are the FOIA responses from them. I didn't know he's going to testify.
Actually, it's not a FOIA response, we just gave it to you.
I mean, the, the letter of responses that we wrote, letters asking for all the studies that the DLM was referring to, and they said they studied these sites. And what doc, we also asked for documents.
We actually studied 16 sites.
We also asked for the documents that they had submitted to Matrix because it's very clear in the Matrix document that they relied on the government of Guam, so we wanted to see.
Yes, they have a statement on there. And you can tell they did because I put some tracer things in there.
Mr. Borja, the spreadsheet without any, like, calculations as to which one ranked?
Oh, we didn't assign by points.
Right, okay.
And you can, it's much more detailed than just three or one or two. For example, "Short-term construction impacts to the surrounding community, very high, deal breaker, disqualifier, building while operating?" Question mark. "Heavy construction activity in a residential zone, emerald green example." So we not only set one point, you know, what, what did you base your one point on there?
Mr. Borja, so, and you, you were the one who determined these, the information put into these categories?
Me and GIDA.
Okay, thank you.
And Ancestral Lands. So, so, you know, we, we gave it to them. We gave it to them really, really raw. We actually gave them everything. And you as the consultant, develop your report. You know, we've developed ours. And they did put a disclaimer in there that everything in here, they got from government agencies. And they listed Land Management number one. Okay, so, you know, I, I think everyone knows where the location is. It's kind of like Hawaiian Rock and like that, you know. And in this gentleman's quick claim deed, he actually made a mistake on it, you know, and he put down that the property that he's selling is alongside Route 15. Well, this site is not Route 15, it's back away from Route 15. So he's made that mistake. And we kind of reverse engineered the recording fee. And I think he sold it for like $8,000. He sold his children's future in that property. And the sadder thing about that is that he also put a cloud on the title of properties that they rightfully own by doing that. And I'm sorry to say, the guy's last name begins with a B. It's a five-letter word and it ends with an A. And that's, that's a lawsuit right there, Senator Fisher. So, so, you know, it's, it's, but the basic parameters that we're looking at is expansion. Otherwise, you're going to come back here in another 10, 15, 20 years looking for another site or looking at how you can expand that building over there. That, to me, you know, as a land use planner, is the most critical parameter, expansion. I can understand about drive time, yes. Every minute counts, yes. I've ridden in an ambulance with my father three times where they've had to pull over to stabilize him. You know, I, I, I fully understand that, you know. And then they have what they call the, the golden hour and like that. But it's expansion that we're looking at. And we're looking to the future. We're not looking at building a hospital for today. You know, what's today, what, 161 acre, 161 bed? You know, even the WHO guys, World Health Organization, said something like, United States has two or four beds for 100,000. I think if you do the math on that, that comes out to about 361 beds for, for the hospital. Will the hospital be full all the time? I don't really know. You know, that's, you don't know, you know. COVID might come around. So the land site commitment is really the most important things. Before you start spending any money on a site, you need that land site commitment. Whether you're going to use federal funds or you're going to use some other financing because that'll have an effect on your A and E, on your drawings and like that. And that land site commitment, you know, the legislatures recognize that. Remember the Batula Road site? When federal EPA came to Guam and said, "We'll build you a headquarters. All you have to do is own the land." And the feds have this problem because years ago, decades ago, there was some federal money that came to Guam to build the, I think it was the mass transit building over here near, near the pool. Yep, so the federal government gave some money to Gov Guam, built that thing, then the legislature turned it over to the, to the mayor's office. So the feds are now saying, you know, we'll give you money, but you've got to own the land. And the legislature recognized that because they passed the law, passed the bill that became law, giving title to Guam EPA for that site up there in Batula Road, where the federal government said, it's a, it's a contaminated site. But federal EPA says, we'll come in, we'll clean it for you, we'll build you a state-of-the-art EPA headquarters, but you've got to own the land so that we make sure when we give you that money, it's going to go to EPA, it's going to go for that purpose and not move the, you know, mayor's office of Dedodo into there. By the way, she's really cramped where she's at now, so she might be looking.
On the bill.
Okay, on the bill, you know, I, all I can say is, Speaker, is that we looked at 16 sites and at least from Land Management's perspective, Eagles Field was number one. We all know what happened to that. By the way, I have to refer a letter to you. I've got this gentleman who's been writing me. He wants to know if we can get more land back. You know, he's got some of his land back, so I'll refer that to you and Congressman Moylan to see what we can do on that. So, but, you know, I'm here today basically for the location of the. So, uh, but, you know, I'm here today basically for the location of the property. What are the parameters and what did we look at for that property? You know, what did we look at for that property? And then, of course, uh, Mr. Birchir and his commission, which is full of land activists on it. But somehow he got them to agree that Guam needs a hospital, Guam needs some land, and there was something on it. And you know, on the parameters that we looked at for Adakau when we originally did that? What we did, said was it takes the, uh, takes land out of the GALC inventory, takes it out of the land bank, uh, out of its inventory, and, uh, like that. But at that time, I think we were looking at, John, just give me the property, you know? But now you've got a bill before you, Bill 184, which is what we're all here today, you know, for. So, uh, it's, it's your decision. And, uh, I can understand the commission saying, uh, we'll lease it or we'll sell it. But, you know, you guys know this, that when a bill comes down out here, it's like making sausage. By the time it comes to the floor, it might be something totally different. So the commission is just asking for guidance. What do you want us to do, you know? You know, do you want us to get that money all at once? Or do you want us to get it? And like that. And, you know, I feel bad for him for his budget. I, I don't understand how you can be budgeted for three, four, three quarters only. Close the shop on the last quarter, John. But, you know, so, so that's what, you know, I'm here for. I'm just sticking to the land issues, you know? How many beds there are in the hospital? Somebody else decides that, you know? Uh, travel time, travel time for who? Drive time for who? You know? It's always gonna be closer to somebody's house than your house. I mean, that's, you know? You've got American Medical Clinic just down the street. You know? Dr. Akimodas Clinic there, you know? Which I use a lot since I'm from Baragata. You know, so it's convenient for me rather than coming all the way down to Tamooning, you know, for the early morning blood tests and like that, so. So that's what our, you know, our parameters came. And if you notice on this thing, it says draft. It's always draft, because it's always changing, you know? So we went for Eagles Field. Didn't work out. Okay, we got something. But we did look at 16 other lots. And those 16 other lots included, uh, Gulf Guam lands under Public Law 2218. This concept about a medical complex, this is nothing new. This is not Governor Lillian Guerrero's idea. It's checked in Public Law 2218, 1993. It put together a lot in Santa Cruz Drive in Chalampago Order for the site of the new complex. Talk about topography, and I don't know if any of you guys have driven in that road. I think that's the, normally it's 21, 22, 23 feet. I think that road's like 18 feet wide. And it's, you know, can you imagine? So it wasn't feasible. And, you know, it was land management. I'll, I'll take that acceptance that recommended that. Not, not Joe Borja, but whoever land management was back at that time. But they didn't have the, uh, they didn't have the, uh, the, uh, GIS satellite photos, uh, LiDAR, uh, uh, you know, for topography and like that. All they saw was this lot was 117 acres. And they cut it up and gave public health, two or three facilities, GMH, mental health on that. So this concept about a, a complex is not. Are you gonna build it all at one time? I don't think so. But you wanna give yourself room to expand in the future. You know, that's, that's what land use planning, you know? You want to give yourself room in the future. Uh, yeah, of course, you can build up. You can build something like, uh, like Emerald Towers. But I don't think you can build it over at Epa Point, because Emerald Towers is about 100 feet away from the cliff line. You know, the 19 acres, 25 acres, 35 acres, 55 acres that we talk about at Epa Point? You've got the Nata Mananata up there. You know, get an appropriation going for that. Why? Patrick Luhann is bringing all these repatriated bodies back, you know? We get on the military's case about, uh, hey, you found remains. What about ours? What about the ones that are in beer boxes now, you know? Let's, let's bury them, you know? And then also, you've got the Second Katuran Chamorro. If you build over there, what's gonna happen to Second Katuran Chamorro when you start expanding? You know? You've, you've given those guys, uh, really, uh, an item for failure. You required the Chamorro Land Trust to put it out for a commercial thing and for them to come in and lease it at, uh, at, at what, Fair Market Valley for two months? I don't know value of land is. I do think that land in Tuamun is pretty expensive, especially cliff line. But yet you have this other law for cultural centers, where you give other municipalities, uh, uh, cultural center leases for $200 a year if they're not, uh, if they're nonprofit, and if they are for profit, give them $600 a year. Those guys up there at Second Katuran Chamorro, they, I don't know, they can handle $1,000 a year for that rent, you know? But maybe some kind of, uh, so, you know? And, you know, we'll have part two, I guess, over at, uh, Monday, we have another hearing, John. Gotta give this guy an office down here. He's been here more times than me and like that. So, you know, any questions about those sites? That in, in Lot 184, you know? It's not perfect. I'm not sitting up here saying it's perfect. You're never gonna find any place that you can build a, uh, a, uh, complex that has adequate utilities. But in the plan for, uh, a complex up there, for water, sewers relatively close by. And if you put money into that sewer, you're gonna have a lot more people benefit from that installation of sewer. You put sewer up at Epa Point? Yep, Epa Point Hospital there is gonna benefit. As a matter of fact, they already benefited by putting underground lines to that so that when you have, but, you know, for the future, for a bigger, uh, site that you're, that you're looking at, you know, for, insofar as utilities are concerned. The road, Route 15, it's 100 feet wide right now. You don't have to condemn land to open it. It's about as wide, I guess, as Marie Drive, you know? All the way from the intersection at Route 15, the Veterans Memorial, to the Back Gate to Anderson. And get this, from the Back Gate to Anderson, there's another 100-foot right away, undeveloped, that connects the main gate of Anderson to the Back Gate of Anderson. Now, I use that as reference point, but the Eastman belongs to Governor Guam. They just haven't developed it. What's right below that 100-foot right away? Track 9210, Chamorro Land Trust property. 400 lots, quarter-acre lots. So they need sewer. So they need sewer here. But you connect that thing, you know, when friends of mine come here and they say, Joe, can we go around the island? I said, let me correct that. Can we go around the southern part of the island? Because you can't really go, uh, you know, up that. So the government develops that property there. Infrastructure hopefully comes in for that Chamorro Land Trust subdivision. 400, 600 lots, I believe, in there. And then you connect the Route 15 to Route 1. And that, uh, route there is actually the southern boundary of Anderson Air Force Base. That might be a good federally highway-funded road there to do. So, uh, I, I think that's it. Yeah, I'm more, you know, people come up to me and say, Joe, how much is that property worth? I don't know. You know, it's whatever somebody's willing to pay for it, you know? But if you ask me, well, who owns that property? I have a better chance of giving you a correct answer rather than how much is it worth, you know, on that. And we do have Gulf Guam's only surveyor and like that. So, uh, like I said, robust as the GIS system at GWA was, which is probably a million times better than what they had before. Before, when there was a water leak, they'd have to call in retired employees of POAG to show them where the water line is. Now they have it done on GIS. But that graphic that they gave you, that's incomplete. That's incomplete. And that other map that they gave you has the wrong lot numbers, so. Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Director Borja. Vice Speaker, do you have any questions?
Comment, uh, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity. Been sitting here for a long while now, and I first want to thank, both you, Mr. Borja and Mr. Birchir, for being here and doing your presentation. I know that this is, wasn't the first time you brought this presentation up, and I had an opportunity to also, uh, see what you had to show. And I was hoping that we could get a glimpse of that today, or maybe it was already done. Uh, I apologize, I didn't make it here if it was done in the legislature. Also, Madam Chair, want to recognize that the Gida director, Ms. Melanie Mignola, is here. Thank you very much. I know you've been sitting out there for a long time.
No, we're waiting, she's going to testify.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just getting questions for land management, so we can move on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. But I do know that based on Mr. Borja's presentation, that I had questions based on the facility as it relates to organic growth, height variance, and how did they come up with the, with, uh, the plan of Agaga and all that? And him sharing the presentation to us, he answered a lot of those questions. Uh, and I know that, Mr. Borja, you've been with the government of Guam for a very long time? Well, I've been in for 42 years, so, and I know you were there, uh, way before me. So how long have you been with land management?
Actually, I, uh...
Altogether?
Land management, I don't, I don't really know with land management. But, uh, uh, I think I started working for the Chamorro Land Trust in 1993. Previous to that, I was a summer trainee with GPA. And then I was at the Ancestral Lands Commission, and then on and off with land management, you know? So I'd say about maybe 50 years, without giving away my age, uh, Madam Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much. I asked you that question, sir, because I know that the years of, uh, experience you have within the government of Guam and the expertise as it relates to lands and, and the rules and regulations that's gone before us. One thing that came to mind for me as the presentation was going on was you, the organic growth and where, where the hospital is situated. You and, well, I know you know that, um, having had my mother work at the hospital for over 40 years, both the old, old hos, the old hospital and then the hospital that exists today, I, I think that, um, that we've really outgrown that spot. And you also brought up the parking availability, the space that it's needed, trying to get the patients in and out of there. To this very day, visiting an aunt three times this past week, you can't even find parking. You literally have to park at the condominiums or toward, uh, the, uh, Dr. Berg's place in order to find parking, because that's how far it can get during the day. In this plan of, um, of looking at the different sites, you said that Eagles was number one, and then Agaga and Adakau were...
In, in our land management...
Right, in your assessment.
In our land management matrix.
In, in your land management matrix, what was the variance between the points? What gave, um, the points, Eagle versus Agaga and...
We, we didn't really go by the point system, unlike Matrix. We basically, uh, put it in there as residents of Guam, as somebody growing in Guam, and our local knowledge of the, of the area. For example, uh, I don't know if Matrix, uh, knew about the fault at Epa Point, but we gave it to them. We put it in there, in the, that we gave them. And, uh, they certainly didn't highlight it, you know, on there. So, but that's, if you don't live in Guam, you don't. You wouldn't know that, you know? Unless you went and actually did the, uh, the sites, you know? And, and something that I might add, I don't know if Matrix went out to these sites. Maybe they did, maybe they didn't. You know, I, I don't know how they did that, you know? I know the governor went out and she walked these sites, all these sites that we were listed on there. She actually went out and that. But I don't know if Matrix did. So I have a feeling that Matrix depended on our land management matrix and that. But whether they took it a step further? Yeah, they did. What they added was the drive time. The drive time component, yeah.
Right. I just want to share for the record that you live in Baragata, and I live in Mingila or Chalampago, depending which day of the week it is. And of course, if we look at the legislation before us, whether it had been the previous field or what's in front of us today, for me, I'd probably be biased because I live right next to the village of Mingila and living in Mingila, um, my, uh, you know, both times. But, um, the, the, the opportunity to work with Matrix or give them the report, was that based on, on, um, community, the, the outreach that Matrix was doing with you or on, on this, on this project?
Yeah, Matrix, I met Matrix, the, the company, a couple of times. When I became director, I met with them, I think, two weeks into my tenure at land management. But at that time, what they were coming down with was a, uh, things to do and things not to do, things not to approve in a GLUC meeting. So it wasn't about, my first meeting with them was not. And, uh, you know, near an, near a military installation. So they were coming to land management to give us some tips on how to develop or not develop private property through the Land Use Commission. You know, through the Land Management Commission. In other words, it was, uh, here's the things of do, not to do for developments around military installation. And I asked them, so I asked them who they were working for, and I never saw them again on that issue. Then the other time that I met them is, uh, one of the employees at land management retired and kind of became their local guy here, Matrix here. They, they don't really have an officer, I think. I don't even know if they paid GRT on the contract they got. As to your question about registered lobbyists, Senator Fisher. So, uh, so the second time that I saw them was, they sent out a flyer or questionnaire, you know, in land management's perspective, what do you need for a hospital site, you know? So basically, what we gave them was the matrix that we developed and said, you know, here it is. And they took that and it plays, it actually plays a big part of the report, you know? On it, you can see, yeah. But a lot of it is, well, I shouldn't say a lot. Some of it is, uh, might be wrong, might be right. You know? In some cases, I agree with them, yeah, this is good. Some cases, I, I don't agree with them. But, you know, you'll find that in any report, really, you should. They should tell you all the bad things as well as all the good things. That's their job.
And in, 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 in those meetings too, was there any discussion? I know one of our colleagues talked about variances. One that comes to mind for me would be height variances. And I know that Guam has a particular statute in place about how high we can go to build, especially because land is scarce.
If you build over 30 foot, yes, you would have a variance. So let's take, for example, the Yokudu Power Plant on there. The law says that land shall be used as, uh, you know, power plant. But you don't really legislate variances, because you don't know what it is. For example, I believe some hospitals require a false ceiling, I think, you know? And it's not that easy to convert a commercial building into a hospital. You have to have the oxygen lines. They probably have to be redundant. I, I, I don't know that, but, uh, you know, it's, hospitals are different, uh, different animal in itself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borja. And Madam Chair, I know, I know the time is, is, is... And Madam Chair, I know the time is really critical.
Take your time, Senator.
Thank you. I just want to say, Madam Chair, that I truly appreciate the presentation of both gentlemen here this morning because it gives to us a perspective that it just wasn't the several sites that were looked at or talked about in recent weeks or months, but that literally land management did take the time and, I guess, the government agencies involved to look at the different sites. And we didn't look at several. We looked at 16 sites. I mean, we, the government of Guam. So giving the perspective of the expertise that we have in government that's been here for more than four or five decades, I got to believe that the markers in front of us and the presentation in front of us may be keen into looking and getting the support of what's before us. So, Madam Chair, thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask and comment to this panel here. Sinamasi.
Sinamasi, Vice Speaker. Senator San Augustine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joe and John, thank you both for being here. And I'm very happy, unfortunately, we spent money for a Matrix program, a report, that you pretty much did. And when you mentioned you have your own Matrix report, I think this should be a very good lesson in what we do and before we ask anybody to do an outside study, find out what the GovGuam agency can report to us first. Give us their study. Then we determine if we need to go outside. Because you're right. If I'm going to pay somebody a couple million dollars to do something, they're going to write something. But when they say they depend on your information from the government of Guam, then what do we pay them for? Makes me wonder. And Joe, because I'm familiar with you, you've got a lot of experience in land management. I don't question what you bring up, and I appreciate what you bring up. I appreciate all the areas you discuss. And so I also appreciate what John Birch brought up. Let's take care of what we need to take care of. Take care of the ancestral folks, people that own property. You're never going to have enough money until we do something with a land that is not owned by anybody. We need to lease it or sell it, then we just do it. And on land management side, we need to make sure we recognize what you got, what work both of you have done, and put it in the forefront. Because for me, before my father passed away, former speaker here, he told me, says, "Boy, if you can get a bill introduced and passed to provide funding for a new hospital, go for it because too many hard-headed is down there." And he struggled with that. And we got that bill passed. Sure, it identifies a multi-medical complex, but we know for a fact that when we identified the funding, it was about a hospital. Everything else was forthcoming. And I'm happy that you mentioned it. John and Joe, you need, we need to look at the future. We can't, I mean, I don't know of anybody that, if you were offered a quarter acre lot versus a half acre, first going to ask you, what's the difference in price? And nothing. How many people do you think is going to stick with the one, the quarter acre versus half acre? They want a bigger lot because why? They have room to grow. At Ipau, there's no room for, there's nothing. Unhassalu, that's it, finished. 10, 20 years from today or 30 years, we need to find land, it's too late. This is the prime opportunity. Get the lot, and then we can turn around also. And if there's enough money from Ancestral, maybe you can reach out also to the folks that can get their property back and figure out a way how we can start giving them some compensation. Because the folks that are never going to get their land in Eagles Field, there's got to be a mechanism. God, there's always a mechanism. It's just a matter of the folks having the guts to say, let's figure out a way. And I know you guys can do that. Ancestral can figure this out. I know for a fact, my wife's family has land inside Naval Station. They'll never get the land. My in-laws are passed on. But many of the, you know, the legacy is there. The kids are here. They should be compensated. And I know you guys at Ancestral can figure this out. And let's take care of everybody. People that's on federal land, then we turn around to land management. As you mentioned, there's manholes. Ooh, they, waffa, they manhole, they sewer line. Oh, come on, folks. It's not just water, run down there. GWA, they need to come up with a better program other than just add on things that needs to be properly marked. And I appreciate when you mentioned, when you identified, Joe, about the sewer line. Once you upgrade that area, everybody in that area wins. It's not just about the hospital, it's about everybody. We need to start focusing on the population in general. And exactly when it was mentioned earlier, it matters on where you live. I live in Zigu. And Agaga would be a good place. And if I can't get there, I'll go to GMC. I will not go to GMA's because why? It's a matter of life or death, right? The nearest hospital. And I'm retired Army. I should go to NRC, but I'm going to go to the closest hospital. No difference going to the clinic. The only reason why you have a bunch of clinic in the morning because GMA's was there for 50 years. And before that, if there was a major hospital in Chalampago or Chalampago or Mingila, I'll tell you what, there'll be clinics that will be built. And why they'll build, and this is almost prime time. If they do build, if the bill 184 passes, there's going to be a lot of land for sale. A lot of people are going to be thinking, I can sell my land, you can build your medical facility. Or they'll turn around and says, I'm going to lease you my land for 50 years. Why? Because the owners are going to benefit from that. Their kids can benefit. Because most of us in legislature, most of us, I say the older folks, we won't be here 50 years from today. But the others will be. And we're going to turn back the clock. And exactly like Mr. Borja's mentioned, it was first Chalampago. I put for boat in Chalang. I wouldn't be surprised if it was not, it's not that far away from where the new mayor's office is at, in that general area, the road that goes down. And that was a shot in the dark. Now we got a shot at 102 acres, not 27. I'm not questioning what's going on up there at Ipau. And if anything, because you happen to be Chamorro Land Trust also director, acting director, John, I would say, make, let that property make money to take care of getting infrastructure, you know, power, water into Chamorro Land Trust property. And maybe even working together, Chamorro Land Trust and Ancestral, and make a bigger bank for everyone else. And with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator San Augustine. Senator Caneta?
Thank you, panel, for coming today. Thank you for taking up another job, Mr. Birch, my favorite. Thank you for coming down here. You know, certainly, there's been a lot of issues. And I think this whole medical complex, thank you again for highlighting that this medical complex idea wasn't just from the Tenorio Leongoro administration. It was a long, huge idea back in the day, and it came down to it another controversial time. Then guess what? It died out. Just like our political status. Once upon a time, it was such a big deal, then died out. And thank you for bringing up Nafta Minanata. What are we going to do? We got a plan. It is in the footprint of the hospital if we're going to put it at Ipau Point. So what, we're just going to relocate them? The bill was passed, there was a plan passed.
That's not correct, Senator, sorry. That property's been cut out on all the maps that they've given us. That's all been allocated, that and the Saginacatur. And I want to make sure that that rumor does not spread any farther. That's all been cut out of the property from Ipau.
Yes. Well, I'm just pointing out that SKC, their Saginacatur, Chamorro, we're right adjacent to those properties. So the other property right across Ipau Point is a cavity, a huge cavity. Only thing it's great for is water. Then there's Devil's Pit to the right of SKC. It's another crater. So, you know, I'm very much focused on improving lives and ensuring that the next generation doesn't inherit the same challenges as the previous generation. It makes no sense for me that we're going to put a hospital in the middle of all the tourism and busyness of the island. It's an economic power, so use it for economic opportunity. The hospital being built also at Backroad, whether it's Edada Gaga, Astumbo, or what do you, the other one is called Eagles Field. Eagles Field was number one. The Matrix report said, number one, Eagles Field. But then we unfortunately had the discussion of, we're going to give the lands back. So this is where I come to you. Has any of those lands been returned to those people? Because I asked DOD, and they said there's no land going back to those people. But was there any land given back to anyone? Both of you should be able to answer to that discussion.
You're talking about the Lalo area or what's also referred to as Eagles Field?
Yes.
That, those properties will not be returned. My understanding, they're going to be used by the military. Some word I've heard is that it might be missile defense system or an army base. So it's not going to go back.
And that's my unfortunate position right now is that if we had used it for the hospital, everyone would be able to use the property. The military would have been probably more engaged. Now putting it out on public infrastructure, like I said, we're very good planners. Land management, your building's still in planning stage. Already the cockroach ate it. It's still a plan. So that's what I'm saying is, we can't keep planning, planning, planning. We've got, I've gotten a revitalization. We've got plenty revitalization planning, but we still got empty property. So we're going to pay for a study, and then we're going to make it a controversial issue, and then it's just going to die out because the political hype on it is done. Like I said, our status, our political status was once upon a time a very important issue. We're still discussing it. And again, our job as leaders is to ensure that the quality of life is improved. And it's not about us here, who are either in the panel or not, who's in this room, whether the governor is Lulian Guero or Calvo or Camacho or Fisher, you know? Yeah, Fisher and Fisher, if he wants. But the point here is, we need to do better. We got to make sure that we improve the quality of life and ensure that the next generation doesn't inherit the same challenges. And it's an investment. It will pay 10-fold. Chamorro Land Trust, I date, we've got plenty land. There's plenty land in Numatak, there's plenty land in Enrohan. We still cannot get over the number six person in the registry. I think the granddaughter is like waiting for her own war claims. And she's the third person to deal with Chamorro Land Trust. Again, no pun intended, this is your football now. But it's very frustrating that we got plenty land, but we still got a lot of people relocating. And that's not the point of this hearing. But at the end of the day, we got to decide and choose which way we're going to move forward. And I hope that we move in the right direction and push forward this bill and have a hospital built, wherever it's going to be built, and what the recommended sites are. Because the Matrix study was moot before, now it's the best Matrix study. So other than that, I have nothing further. I just wanted to thank the team for coming out today. A lot of valid points you guys have been pointing out. Your tenure in GovGuam is both older than me, so I take a lot of your information very, very much into heart and into mind. And I really hope that we move forward from this public hearing sooner than later because I date, this is a state of emergency already. Thank you. Have a good day, take care.
Thank you, Senator Caneta. Senator Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to both of you. I'd like to, Madam Chair, I'd like to associate myself with the remarks made by Senator Joe San Augustine as well as Senator Roy Caneta. There was a lot of wisdom in both their statements. The one thing that struck me, well, all the statements were right on point. But the one that struck me was something we haven't talked about, is the, but it's in the Matrix report. The, there's going to be an economic explosion on the Backroad once this product is, once this project is completed. There'll be new housing. People will be taking advantage of the sewer lines and the water lines. People are just going to watch their land values go right through the roof. And just for the record, I don't own any land. I have no land, no interest in any land on the Backroad. But I mean, an economic boon is coming to those people. An economic boon is not coming to Ipau. Ipau, Oka Point is already developed within an inch of its life, so there's really nowhere for that place to go economically. So that being said, a question I have about, thank you for bringing up the fact, and you too, Senator Roy. It looks, as I understood it, the 18th Guam Legislature, I believe, passed a proposition for the construction of a medical community. And I think you cited that, it's 22-18. We also have, I think it was the last legislature, was the development of the 21st Century Health Plan. And as I understand it, what the legislature did, and correct me if I'm wrong, what the legislature did was they said, this is a project we want to do, and we want to pay for it. And we are asking the executive branch to execute it. Which leads me to my point here, which is, I think we have a lot of trouble here in this legislative body staying in our lane. I am not the governor. I'm not the executive branch. I'm the, I'm part of the legislative branch. We pass laws and we ask the executive branch to execute these things. I worry about a situation where we get so deeply into the weeds, we're going to be having oversight to determine, you know, what sort of PVC is being used at the new hospital, you know? What's the PSI on the concrete that's getting poured? That is not our lane. We determine if we are going to transfer this land to the government of Guam as some sort of a state. And then the executive branch, whoever that governor is, there will be more governors coming down, has a responsibility under the Organic Act and of course, under our laws to execute this plan, which is build the hospital. And I trust her judgment. It's not for me to second-guess that judgment. We have asked her to choose a place to build it, and she has come to a, anybody, you might not, you might disagree and say, well, you know, I would have preferred X versus Y. But so long as her choice is reasonable and so long as her choice is rational, which this clearly is, I think that it's a legislative duty to stand back and give deference to the executive branch the executive branch in this since that's the reason for them to exist. So anyway, so there's a little editorial comment, let's stay in our lane. Sir, you mentioned Lot 2481 and you said it had a cloud on it because this gentleman filed on top of somebody else's land or some land that doesn't belong to him. Has that cloud been removed?
Not that I know of Senator.
This seems to be squarely within the Attorney General's responsibility. Do you know whether or not they have a plan to sue, to quiet title or anything like that?
No Senator, that'll depend, the plaintiff in that case would have to be ancestral lands or the guy that bought the property.
Yeah.
The private guy that bought the property.
Yeah, yeah, the guy that bought the property, but I can tell you, after practicing law, it's not unusual, I'm sure you know. When you start doing title searches, you see all sorts of crazy things in there, you know, just rogue deeds and just causing a big mess. So, I'm sure you both know that that is not necessarily an unusual situation. You, well again, this just goes back to what I said earlier, Madam Chair. You guys had made an internal decision that you came to believe that the Attica Crown property was the second best, based on your determination. And I'll ask you, you know, these are standard questions, did you come, do you believe that your decision on that was rational?
It was rational because actually, personally, I've been involved in these federal excess lands cases and the Eagles Field really had more benefits. Talk about economic explosion, you're gonna be bringing in 100 acres of land that's basically being used as a soccer field and you're gonna be bringing that into the economy, you know, by building the hospital there. And as far as I know, I didn't really have any feelings. So I'm kinda one side, yeah, you know, these people should get their land back, but this whole thing about getting their land back and then the land bank, one family can wipe out the land bank.
One family, yeah. So when you internally were making the decisions and the analysis, when you lit upon Attica, Attica Crown lands as being number two, were you using your best business judgment in doing so?
Well, you know, business involves profit, so I don't, you know.
I guess I'm using that as a term of art. Were you using your best judgment?
Land use planning, yes.
Yeah.
As far as I was concerned.
All right, and I gather that that's part of your job, land use planning?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So we came to, the government of Guam came lit upon a conclusion that while it wasn't the best, Eagles Field was, that slipped through our fingers, Attica Crown is what is left. Well, and then I suppose Tamooning comes in as number three. This is, this is something I've never been able to wrap my head around. If we, if we go to Tamooning, if we decide that we're gonna go Oka Point, then that per force means we have to abandon the Matrix study and the Guam Medical Campus because there's just not room. However, if we decide not to abandon that, the medical complex study and decide to build it in Tamooning, I don't see, you know, paying attention to geometry, I don't see any way that we could do that without condemning private property. And, you know, I've said that before, but that just seems to me a logical conclusion which no one in this room wants to happen and I don't think it ever will happen, so you've, you know, folks in Tamooning should rest easy. You know, one thing, someone's gotta give. Either we are going to abandon the plan completely and start over again, or we're gonna have to condemn property if we decide on Oka Point, which as we've already heard, is not the ideal solution or selection. So, I don't, I know everybody's been sitting here a long time and Madam Chair, I guess those are all the questions and observations I have to make and thank you for the opportunity. Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you Senator Fisher. Senator Perez, again, it's about 10 to 12, we are going to continue this hearing at 5:30 if we're not able to finish, and it looks like we're not gonna be able to finish. We still have the Director of GITA who is going to testify, so, but Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you Madam Speaker. Good morning to the both of you here.
Good morning Senator.
Yeah, thank you for your stamina. I have a question, I guess the lots that are here, lots that are listed in the bill. So Director Borja, do you know what the history of this, the usage of this area, do you have any knowledge about the history?
At what particular time in history?
Anything.
Pre-war, post-war? It was the site of the Battle of Barigata. Previous to that, the largest land owner in that Barigata, municipality of Barigata, was a gentleman whose last name is five-letter word, begins with a B and ends with an A. It was basically farmland. And certain portions of it were used as farmland up to 1999. A private individual had a 50-acre cattle farm, a former director of agriculture had a watermelon farm up there and a couple of original landowners had farms up there, the Lizama family.
Okay, so there was, it was a site of previous war, oh, battle you said?
Entire Guam had war.
Okay, so yeah, possibly a war site, but there's also farming there as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
As for example, Barigata Village, now Barigata Village, that was actually farmland, Tizan was actually farmland. So the military condemned, federal government condemned, I believe from about 13 landowners, divided it up into a subdivision, you know, Barigata has sewer lines in the village and like that, so it became like that, you know? So there are a lot of villages that were created by the military, Talafofu, Asa, Ndeedo, Jorña, Barigata. These were farmlands and then military condemned them for presidential use.
Okay. I guess the other question or two I have is, have you been privy to discussions about the military's plan to use any of these sites for like military defense? Do you know what kind of lands they're gonna be using in this area?
Which, which area are you talking about?
Just the Back Road area? Is there plans for the military to use any of those lands?
I'm not privy to any of those plans of what they might put up there, other than the golf ball, the next radar. That radar is used actually by the Air Force, I believe, to make sure that when the bombers go out, you know, that's good weather, but I think that technology on that will probably, that thing will probably be removed in a, yeah.
Okay, so the golf ball, where's that gonna be?
Which one?
The golf ball that you mentioned?
I don't know where it's gonna be, but the technology, because Radio Barigata, you know, that area known as Radio Barigata, from Route 8A, that road that goes next to Happy Mart and all the way up to the golf course and then over to Route 15, that's actually called Radio Barigata C. And the reason why they needed a lot of land there because radio means not, you know, not a radio, well, it is, means a radio station, but it's not like a commercial radio station. They had 400-foot antennas and when those fall, you know, they have to clear any structure around it. So if you look at old pictures of that aerial, that area, you see that they're like circles that they maintain and those areas are actually where those antennas are. So that's why it's called Radio Barigata, you know? So there's Radio Barigata A, B, and C. B is actually over there by, by the post office and A is a little bit north on that, you know? So previously, and like I said, you know, I didn't mean that question as a procedure, prior to the war, 1940, 1940, most of these areas were farmland. You know, everybody had a house in the Gania and a ranch somewhere. Some of them were large landowners. And then after the war, of course, military came in right away, trespassory occupancy and, you know, they needed the property. They actually almost leased the entire island. And then as they decided, you know, we need a navy base here, we need a supply depot here, we need munitions here, that's when they started developing the facilities that they have now and then released part of the property that they felt they didn't do need at that time. But along the way also, they created villages for the, for the Chamoros, I believe, at that time, you know, they actually created villages.
So do we have anything in our archives that shows the footprint of all the activity in the past, right? The military's done on this area?
I do have a graphic that shows what military agency used what area. You know, like for example, Terpita Base is here, Hospital is here, civilian areas here and like that. I do have a graphic of that, but I pulled that out of a report and some of them, I think it was about 134 sites, military sites around, and so we don't, you know, there's a cut on the bottom of the page. That's available at mark, you know, that's military use circa 1945.
Would you be able to provide that to the committee?
I'll give you a copy of that, that's no problem, but like I said, the bottom of the page is cut off, maybe a better copy might be up at the mark.
Okay.
But I'll give you what I have.
Okay. The other site that you mentioned the governor really wanted, what was the name of that site?
Ungaguan.
How do you spell that?
I think it means to ask, but I'm not very fluent in Chamorro, so I'm not sure what it means. I know Edada Gaga means red dirt, you know, but Ungaguan, I don't know.
And so the military decided that that wasn't one of their, is it, so it's under, is it under military control, that particular site?
Yes, you know, that's where they built the, that area, Radio Barigata B, I think. I don't know, million square meters or something like that, a lot of square meters. But, you know, they started developing that area for the military years ago, decades ago, National Guard, FEMA warehouses up there where they keep all the standby generators and like that. But then you have that big open field, you know, that to the right there, that used to be, have antennas right around that turn. But there are original landowners over there also. As a matter of fact, a couple of the landowners over there, their last names begin with a B and ends with an A.
So, okay, yeah, I'm just kinda curious about these, just the context, right? Because, you know, we're hyper-focused on the footprint of the proposed bill, but I'm just wondering what else is happening around this area?
Yeah, one of the reasons really that this site proposed or offered by resolution by the ancestral lands, one of the reasons why it rose to the surface was that it had no original landowner. That's probably why it rose up there, as well as the size of course and like that, you know? But I wouldn't be surprised if you have some families that may want to sell property up there, because they really can't develop it other than a ranch and, you know, they don't even have a developed road going in there, so.
And in the bill, so I mean, it does mention something about, and you probably did discuss this earlier, that there doesn't need to be any kind of, basically it's exempt from getting appraised. Is that something, I mean, why would that be necessary?
Well, you know, like I said, I don't have any experience really in value, but I think probably it's to let the market, let the negotiations go with, and not be limited to an appraisal. Maybe they want more than the appraisal, they being the ancestral lands. I don't know, that's, you know, it's, that actually was put in there, that part of the law was put in there when people were doing land exchanges. And maybe this family was getting more area for area, you know, in value, so that kinda leaves it at an appraisal, you know, to on that. And appraisers are not, I don't know if they're licensed, I think they're certified, you know? And I remember seeing an appraisal for a piece of property in the Gania, the courthouse, versus a property in Aga, and I think it was 25 to 1 and, you know, wow. That's, that's a big difference, but, you know, they're appraisers, I guess they know what they're doing.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you. Maybe this question's for Director Birch. So, what is your take on exempting appraising of the property? Is this positive for ancestral lands, do you think? Or is it, would it be a negative, have a negative impact?
We need a starting point to begin negotiations and appraisal's good at that. We've used appraisals for increasing rents to properties like Matson is leasing properties from ancestral lands and to determine where our starting point for negotiation, appraisals have stepped in. It doesn't mean that that's the price that we're gonna ask for. And usually, we start high and they'll start low, but the appraisal's somewhere in the middle. And so far, we've been going into ones I've been involved with, we've been getting above the appraisal value. And yes, my staff did advise me that the appraisal group that's gonna do this is Milo, that's M-I-L-O appraisal group. They texted that to me earlier, I know the speaker asked that question, who were the appraisers?
But in the bill, would it affect you if this was taken out? I mean, how would that affect you if the exemption?
It'd give us more, more free hand in negotiations.
Okay. So basically, it'd be good to have an appraisal?
It'd be good to have one, but I don't think it's necessary, let the market set the price.
Okay, so exempting, it would probably be in the best interest of ancestral lands to not have an exemption, is that correct?
To me, having appraisal sets a base, but in negotiations, you could go above or below. The market, like Director Borja said earlier, he would like to see the market set the price for the property and normally, that's what happens. And as the price in the market goes up, the appraisals start to also increase likewise when they start using comparisons with other properties that sold and the general location, the general size and so on, so. But appraisals are, are standard, so I have no problem with doing the appraiser.
Okay, so then if this were to be removed, then you'll be fine?
We'll be fine also, with or without it.
I see. Okay, thank you. Thank you Madam Speaker.
Senator, and because of the time, as I announced earlier, we have to end at 12 today. We announced that we would continue this hearing at 5:30, so I apologize, but if I could ask particularly the Director of Land Management to come back at 5:30, the Director of GITA to come back at 5:30. I promised the governor to allow the senators to ask as many questions as possible to, and she said she would have the agencies available. So I appreciate that all of you are taking the time to do this and I, as I said, we need to get the record clear so that we are dealing with the same facts. So we're gonna recess until, it's about 12 noon now, right, Mr. Borja?
Yeah, and I appreciate Senator, you know, that the presentation I made here, I hope some of the senators went back, watched it and say, well, we could ask Joe what this is about.
So we're going to, we're gonna reconvene at 5:30 PM. Sisius Massey, thank you.